Evening, everyone. This is the Executive Affairs. My name is Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, the Vice President of Executive Affairs, and this is the Committee. Today, we have the extreme pleasure of the Council of Great City Schools, A.J. Kebrel, who is a master of student outcome-focused governance, along with one of his coaches, Leslie Grant, who will be facilitating this committee meeting today. And we'll be going over goals and guardrails. I'm going to have our fabulous superintendent chime in, and she can introduce the guests.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice President Dr. Evans-Brown. Again, congratulations to you on your honor this past weekend as a Black Achiever in the city of Buffalo. Something. And, you know, I would like to start by just if we could, you know, just take a second of silence, maybe two or three. Very unfortunate situation happened today involving one of our students, good-standing student in the Buffalo Public Schools. And it was just a tragic accident that happened whereby a garbage truck backed into him, and he has sustained very, very serious injuries. And we all need to just send any thoughts or, you know, prayers or anything that we can to he and his family. I was at the hospital for a couple of hours with the family, and they are devastated. They are devastated. So with that being said, you know, we are all so vested in our children. You know, these, all of our children are all of our children. And, you know, this work that we are embarking upon with student governance is a way for us to help ensure that all of our children every day have every opportunity to enhance their student outcomes so that they have a good life. And so, you know, I know that, you know, it's a lot of work, and the work is not always easy. But, you know, I see a strong commitment from the board for this work. And so tonight, we have Mr. A.J. Kebrel and Ms. Leslie Grant, who I believe will be taking us, walking us through some of the goals. I think we have about four goals for the year. I have created a sheet so that all of our principals and assistant principals and coaches and everybody knows what they are. Then there are about seven interim goals, and I believe two guardrail goals. And so I'm not exactly sure of how A.J. and Leslie are going to walk us through it, but that's kind of a high-level overview of what we'll be covering tonight. So I'll turn things over to Leslie.
All right. Welcome, everybody. I appreciate y'all having us here tonight. And prayers for the young man. I saw the story in the news, so hope everything works out. So A.J. is somewhere logging on right now. But what I want to do is just make sure everybody is clearly on the same page in terms of what we want to accomplish tonight and what we have done recently. So on August the 10th, we had an in-person meeting. We spent a full day where we were reviewing community feedback from the listening sessions that you all had around what the community wants to see, what their vision is for students in Buffalo Public Schools. These are long-term vision thinking. And also, what values you heard rise to the top during those conversations. During that day on August the 10th, we were able to also look at some data the district had assembled. And the board came up with a draft of three different goals and two different guardrails. And the intention of our work together with you, and because of the timeframe during the year, where we're at during the school year, these goals are going to be drafted for a period from 2025 to 2030. So that would be the extent, the length of these goals. Because the district is interested in making sure that they are on track with expectations the board has around this year, we did have a conversation and did some work, a lot of back and forth with the superintendent. Thank you very much for y'all's work that you put in there. And the board did adopt at the last meeting a set of goals for the 24-25 year. So I just want to make sure everybody understands there's two separate things that we've been working on of late. So what I want to do tonight and our desire tonight is essentially to finish the work that we had set out to do on the 10th of August. So we had, again, took a full day to come up with these three goals. And as you all know, we have a couple of things that we're, you know, continuing to push you on and continuing to make sure that you are holding up for yourselves down the road for future boards and for the students. And that has to do with your focus. And your, the board is the, you are nine people in the city of Buffalo who have the power to set some expectations that you want to see for students in the future. And by setting very specific and narrow-focused goals, you are able to ensure that the work towards those goals is actually accomplished. You're going to be going through a practice called progress monitoring of those goals and guardrails that will give you insight, consistent insight, monthly insight into the reality for your students that you don't clearly have right now. So this is big work. This is, you know, you're taking this on, and we really greatly appreciate the fact that y'all are stepping into this. Everybody is not as courageous enough to do this work. So it does take a lot of time. It does take a lot of your attention. I do see, A.J., are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Do you have camera ability?
Nearly.
Okay. All right. Do you want to talk a little bit about the, I don't know if y'all want to do screen share or does everyone, all of the board and those in attendance, do you have the draft or goals and guardrails document with A.J.'s feedback in front of you?
Screen share would be nice if you have it.
I can do that.
Leslie, are you able to show your screen?
Yeah, I can do that. I think, hang on. Does that work, can y'all? You can see that? Okay. Let me know if I need to. Okay. So this document is also up on the website that I've built the implementation website. So y'all have had access to it there. We emailed it to you at least a week ago. I'm not sure exact date. But the key to this document had to do with the goal that we ended up with, the goals and guardrails we ended up with at the end of the day on 8/10. There was some more information you were seeking from the administration. Their response to that information is on, is in the green text. Anything that was in yellow, highlighted in yellow, were things that we were looking, seeking for input. And then A.J. and his, from all of his experience with this work, did have some input around where you ended up. So, A.J., do you have access? Are you looking at this now? I'm not sure where you're.
I'm trying to pull it up right now.
Yeah. And so just for anyone who, you know, like refresher, we have, again, three goals. And again, kudos to y'all for staying focused and, you know, really trying to narrow it down to three. You have a college and career readiness goal. You have a literacy goal, and then you have a numeracy goal. And then for the guardrails, there was a guardrail that wanted to ensure equitable allocation of resources. And then another one that wanted to ensure protection of culture and climate in the district. So I want to make sure that we do cover everything tonight. We have an hour and a half. Well, A.J. has until 6:30. And I just want to make sure that we are taking full advantage of his learning and expertise in this. He's been working with boards who have been setting goals and, you know, knows, understands the full spectrum from when you set them to when that period runs out, what the, what your expectation can be. And I certainly want all of you to be able to bounce any questions you have off of A.J. So, A.J., you want to?
Do you have? What do we do to get updates from the staff?
Dr. Williams has her hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify because earlier I mentioned the four goals and the seven interim. That was for this year. But what we're talking about now is for '25 through '23. So I just wanted to clarify that piece.
Yeah. So the feedback that we sought from the administration has been put in. That's in the green, in the green text. So they came back, as you'll see in the blue, there were several different, there were two different areas that were highlighted. We have not yet settled, the board has not yet settled for the first goal on that highest-leverage, highest-needs student group. So that would be one thing the board, we need to converse about. And then as you go through, again, your feedback rather than the response from the administration.
So the key thing that the board needs to arrive at some level consensus about are the highlighted items for each of the three. Is that accurate?
First of all, yes. The board needs to have consensus around what the administration's response was to those highlighted. So if you look at that, the first one around college and career, if you look at where they came back with the second highlighted area, the validated indicators, evidence of college and career readiness.
And the administration's response was graduation within four years, demonstrating proficiency by earning at least one college credit, receiving a technical endorsement, or a SEDAS-endorsed diploma. And so the question on the table is, does that meet the board's expectation when it describes validated indicators of college and career readiness? Is that the question the board needs to answer?
Yes.
A.J., can you repeat that, please? Make it a little clearer?
And so.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone.
So in early August, decided if you could. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just now realizing the reason I'm confused is I am looking at a different document than the one that you have up. So hold on. Let me pull up the one that you just.
Yeah, I just, I emailed it to you as well, if you can't see it on the screen here. Yeah. I mean, for those of you who can see on the screen or who have the document open yourself, I've just highlighted it with my cursor, the piece that was filled in.
All right. Now I'm on the same document. Sorry about that. I was scrolling up and down, and it wasn't matching. Now I get it.
Okay, I understand now.
So board members, within the next hour and 15 minutes to really set your staff up for success is clarity that they're going in the desired direction. And so what happened is in early August, as a board, you provided your administration a general sense of what your view of the community's highest priority goals for what students should know and be able to do. One of them was college and career readiness. But what you all didn't clarify was what are the indicators of college and career readiness? And so you asked your superintendent to bring you back a recommendation of what that would mean. And what she's brought you back is this idea of four-year, that they would graduate within four years. So that's really kind of your first indicator of college career readiness. And within those four years, they will have earned at least one college credit or received a technical endorsement or a SEDAS-endorsed diploma. And so the question that you as a board need to answer for yourselves today in order for your staff to be able to take this back and be clear about their next steps is, does that definition that the administration provides you meet the board's consensus of what you intended when you said of validated indicators and evidence of college career readiness? So let me pause for a second. And I just want to hear from board members. Yes, that is a reasonable interpretation of what we meant? Or no, that's not a reasonable interpretation of what we meant? Board members, what say?
I'll start. Yes. It is. It is my conceit or our conceived notion of what we think is appropriate. Anybody else?
I would agree that it does meet our, it meets my expectations from the conversation that we had in August.
Thank you. Any other board members?
I'll chime in. It meets some of the expectations, but it's about addressing like more rigorous learning opportunities and supplying those opportunities to each and every school. So thinking back from elementary through high school, that we be able to provide AP classes for our students, and that would have to be a goal of the district to be able to accomplish that.
Is there a specific change to the language that you would recommend?
Let's review it in one second, please.
And we can come back to you in a moment. Any other board members? Is this the reasonable interpretation of what you intended when you developed this back in early August? Any other board members?
Well, I would say we said college-ready. So graduating in four years does that. Career-ready, career-ready says at least they got some kind of skill, which is a technical endorsement or this endorsed diploma. That's a skill. So that does hit college and career-ready. And adding at least one college credit takes us to include the higher achievers. So I'm comfortable with it.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other board members?
I'm comfortable with it.
Good.
Well, this is Hurd coming back. I'll just say graduating in four years doesn't mean that they're college-ready. And to do that, I think that to achieve the second, number two, about at least one college credit, that we have to offer AP classes to our student body so that they can be closer to being college-ready.
So one thing that I'd clarify is if I'm reading this correctly, and Dr. Williams, feel free to chime in if I'm misinterpreting this. My understanding of the way that what your staff has brought you read is that for students to count in this, they would have to both have graduated within four years and achieved one of the other three indicators. Madam Superintendent, am I interpreting that correctly?
That is correct. That is correct.
And so just to clarify, I don't know if that, you know, Terrence, I don't know if that changes.
It does.
With the four-year graduation, not an or. So if a student graduated in four years but didn't receive college credit, didn't get a technical endorsement, didn't have a SEDAS, then they would not count toward this. The administration would not get credit for having accomplished this for that student.
This is my problem last year. Is that we have, we have students across the country that graduate with the four-year diploma, but they go to college and take remedial courses because the courses that they took or didn't score high enough in the SATs or PSATs. And, and they spend a year taking remedial courses, and, and a lot of them drop out of school just because of taking a year with no accreditation in college. And they feel like they behind the peers that's in college. So that's the language that I'm challenged by, just trying to keep retention, you know, once they go to higher education. So I would say that we have to offer at least some AP classes during their, during their freshman, sophomore, junior, senior years so that we can achieve this goal and make us closer to achieving it.
I was under the impression that taking an AP class would, is that not a college-level class?
Yes, it is a college-level class. An AP class is, or dual enrollment is. Those both are. I think what we're trying to get towards, though, is what is the threshold in terms of student performance that predicts success in college? I'm going to propose that SAT scores and PSAT scores aren't quite it. I see that Anne Baudachelli is on the line. Do we have a threshold for grades that we're looking for or other kind of criteria that tends to be predictive of success in college? Ms. Baudachelli, do you mind weighing in?
I necessarily have a GPA that would tell us how successful a student might be. But to your point, an AP course, they submit a syllabus to college board, which is pre-approved. So we know that it is a rigorous course. Students, in some cases, receive a dual credit for the AP course, depending on the grade that they achieve in the class. And/or they may score a three, four, or five on the actual exam, which can lead to college credit. And then we have dual enrollment courses, which are just directly with the college that we're working with or the university that we're partnering with. So there's a number of opportunities for kids to accrue a college credit. But to your earlier question, I don't know, there's no GPA per se that we would say would deem you successful.
Board members, anyone else? Does this seem like a reasonable interpretation of the board's expectation or not? Any other board members before we transition? It sounds like we have a consensus at this point, so I don't want to belabor the point. But any other board members want to be heard on this before? All right. The one other aspect of goal one that you all indicated was that this goal should be focused on students who are in your highest-needs student groups and for whom impacting them would have a significant impact on the rest of the students. Or as it's described here, the highest-leverage student group. And so you all debated this and were unable to arrive for yourself of who that high-needs, high-leverage student group might be. And so you deferred to your superintendent the task of identifying that and making a recommendation. The recommendation that comes back from your superintendent, I did not see an indication of a particular student group. It effectively means that this will apply to all students. If that meets the board's consensus, then so be it. But that is not what we captured from the session in early August. And so what there is to do now is I want to go back through and test for consensus for this item as well. Board members, are you comfortable with this goal applying to all students? Or are you wanting it to apply to a student group that represents your highest-needs, highest-leverage students? Board members, what say? Does all work or a specific student group work?
Okay. Terry Schuder has her hand up. Terry, you're muted.
Sorry. My thought is that if we saw data of comparison of different groups and if something that we would see from a specific data, data points from the different student groups, that perhaps we could see something that would give us a higher leverage than the whole group and see if we could make a difference, a sustainable difference with a high-needs student group instead of just doing it as a blanket. Because we know some of our kids are going, obtain this criteria quite easily and may not need the extra support that if we had a targeted group, we could really make some really good progress.
So I just want to check in. Are you good with all, which is what the current version suggests? Or do you want it to focus on a specific student group?
I, I would like to see it on a specific student group instead of all. That's my thought.
Any other board members? Want to check in with board members and see if there's an emergent consensus here?
I think all is way too broad, and I don't see where we received the recommendation to say who would be the highest impact. Because trying to put the gas in 12 trucks isn't going to move us anywhere. So I'd like to, I'd like to have it narrowed because all is meaningless.
All right. Any other board members?
I think, you know, when we look at the 24-25 cohort, you know, students who are coming in ninth grade, who will graduate in four years, to me, that's all. It's all students who come in, in that cohort and who graduate in four years. Anybody else? Comment?
Yes. I see what you said, Dr. Evans-Brown. And we do get new students that come into our high schools, you know, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year, transferred from other locations. And we try to put them in the same cohort and give them the same, the same terminology as we use in their children that may be in our 2020 cohort that will apply for today. It would be disadvantage on the superintendent that's trying to achieve the goals and how it can be marked against her. And especially, we got a lot of new English language learners that come to our district also. So if you grouped them all together, it would be a huge disadvantage on the superintendent trying to achieve her goals and how we will greater.
I get that, Mr. Hurd, but that's the reality. Schools are judged, when I was a high school principal, if I got 15 kids in senior year that were undercredited and missing exams, that's how the state of New York measures you. You, I'm not sure that you can pick and choose because all the kids that are, are in a cohort, regardless of when they come, they're Buffalo students and we're responsible for their accountability status. So I don't know, I don't know how we could do that. How we could say if a kid comes from another school, we're not going to count them as we're not responsible for them.
That's, that's how New York State grade, but we're talking about the board or how we grade our superintendent. This is our evaluation, not New York State's.
Right. But it's still, though, it still doesn't make sense. So what are we going to do? Are we going to say, okay, so we got this kid in sophomore year? So then we'd have to weigh how much it would be counted towards the evaluation because we have such a transient population. I don't know how we can start just individually the hundreds of kids. I, I'm just trying to think about how you keep track of that for accountability purposes.
Maybe we can implode on a district on this because we got kids sitting in class right now that don't know, that'll have any English-speaking abilities. And the district is trying to manage this problem, yes. But it's a lot more the last several years, especially with our new language learners. This problem, yes, but it's it's a lot more the last several years, especially with our with our uh, new language learners that's coming over. And our um, asylum seekers that's that's been transferred here to the city of Buffalo. So I mean, uh, it should be a different category. I think I think we all said that previously, but now it's how to categorize it.
Yeah.
Is uh, is the cohort twenty-five hundred kids? If you take thirty thousand kids divided by twelve grades, are we talking about our measurement is based upon twenty-two thousand five hundred children? Is that what we're saying?
Give or take, give or take. Um, it depends. Some years it's a little higher, some years it's a little lower. I just want to remind the board that I think graduation rates are right now in the process of um, being revised. Um, and they're looking at more multiple pathways for students. Um, to demonstrate college and career readiness than just college courses or the CDOs diploma. Our requirements. So I think that'll be rolled out at some point, probably this spring. But this may need to be accepted once that comes out. Thank you. Sharon Belton Cotman, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Sorry, that was a little late. I was in City Hall. Uh. Um, and just didn't make it out in enough time today in a meeting I had. Um, I'm looking at these goals and it's piggyback on what the superintendent just says. I don't know how goal one can even be measured when they're different categories. Okay? Um, now one chat, one college credit receiving a technical endorsement of a CDOs. When I originally talked about the 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 technical endorsement or CDOs. Um, I thought of that as its own category. I wanted to make sure that the students who are in CTE. That we continue to um, improve that outcome. We have a cohort of a hundred and fifty. How many of that of those children that are in that technical endorsement? Uh, uh, receive uh, their CDOs because right now it's not as as high as I feel it should be. And so for me, I'm really getting confused how uh, your uh, the staff is going to even be able to measure. Um, to measure that because, yeah, one credit course, but when we're talking about receiving a technical endorsement or a CDOs. Uh, that's a different, that's a whole nother category. So I'm I'm really trying to struggle with this. I've uh, I was trying to listen to the conversation, but it just appears to me. That those are two distinct areas and yet they're 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 the same, but they're distinct. In that the goal for receiving a technical endorsement or CDOs, uh, endorsing the diploma. Uh, that's to me, okay, is its own category. You've got students who are not under technical education, who um, um, who the one, we could do the one credit. But technical endorsement, that's a whole nother category under the CTE umbrella. And that's what's confusing me with this. It always has, but I thought there was going to be some structure today that might make it clear, but. I see that as two separate things. Um, and and yet they're the same, okay? But I I I would like to know that each year we're going to increase the amount of students that that get technical um, endorsements or CDOs. Um, I I am very excited to be going to Dallas to see what Dallas is doing. Okay, how they're graduating their children and almost all of them, but I'm being told. Are coming out with their certifications, ready to go to job, go to to the workforce. So that's going to be something to see, but that's where I'm at with this. So I understand, you know, um, and we've always had problems. But we've always had the 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 good problem of having um, diversity. But I want you to take a note, a lot of those children are are um, valedictorians in our district. Okay, so um, they have overcome uh, language obstacles. Um, uh, we recently had one that came in the ninth grade that couldn't even read. Uh, uh, read or even speak English that well and turned out to be the valedictorian. So we cannot uh, put limits on what children can do. We have to put expectations on what adults need to do. So that's what I just want to share that because I'm really struggling with that goal number one. Um.
Do you have a? Do you have a specific uh, view on all versus a specific student group?
Mm-hmm. I don't think it applies to all. I mean, I think all is different. And when I say, when we say all, okay? Okay, all what? All seats, uh, uh, CTE students? You see what I'm saying? All students that are are on career track? What what, you know, all? That to me are two different cate, I mean, I mean, it's same category when we say all, but it's not. It's 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 different pockets that exist. We have children that are on a college pa- uh, path. They're taking college courses. They are already have uh, college um, credits. Then we have students that are on a CTE uh, uh, path. And then we have students that are on a general ed path. And so I'm not sure what that looks like. I'm I can't figure it out.
And we have students that are on an arts path. I mean, we've got lots of different pathways. Um, and ways for students to earn, you know, diplomas and things that they major in in our school district.
So there, are there any other board members who want to be heard on this? Uh, the consensus I'm hearing is that the board wants uh, your superintendent. To identify a student group, uh, namely a uh, high need, high leverage student group. Uh, that this would focus on rather than focusing on all. Are there any other board members who want to be heard on this? That's the consensus I'm picking up.
I I'm, my thought is. Would be an umbrella that would overreach into many of our population. Is the uh, economically disadvantaged student. And uh, I think that that's a a group that could really benefit from uh, our uh. Our focus.
Uh, so I hear a recommendation for the superintendent. Um, but uh, what I'm taking away from this conversation is that uh, the board is expecting the superintendent, your uh. For goal number one, that the consensus I've heard the board accepts the interpretation you've offered for. What is evidence of college career readiness? I'm hearing that the board is looking to you to come back with. Uh, uh, further revision of this to identify a specific high need, high leverage student group that this would. Apply to rather than applying to all students. Uh. Yes, ma'am.
So in addition to that, what I heard our board president say though too is, are we just going to focus on the CDOs piece? Or are we focusing on? Um, you know, the college credit piece also? Is that something else that needs further revision so that maybe we're not only just focusing on one high need student group? But we're also taking one, one pocket of a pathway that a student can. You know, earn a high school diploma, which could be the CDOs piece, and that would mean we would remove the college credit piece.
So I have not heard a consensus uh, to that effect. The consensus that I've heard um, is. Well, with the version as your team has crafted. Now, I've certainly heard of from individual board members, uh, some uh, additional ideas. But I I have not heard what you just described as a consensus of the board yet. Um, and so so far the consensus that I'm hearing is that the version that you drafted in terms of what is evidence of college career readiness. That so far it sounds like the consensus of the board is there to support that. Um, but in addition, there's a consensus of the board that wants to see from you. Uh, which student group should this be focused at rather than having it focused in all uh, at all students? Uh, do we have a, Leslie, do we have a timeline already put in place? For when the administration is coming back with the interim goals?
Um, we were hoping to adopt um, in January for everything. So I would expect that the interim proposal, yeah, the interim proposal would be done, I I was hoping by mid end of October. They would have a first shot at that.
The last conversation I remember participating in, you all may have changed it since then. The conversation I participated in is that you all, uh, I think we were wanting to schedule something for October thirty to thirty-first, something like that. Um, as the date that you would receive your interms. Am I remember that, remembering that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, and so then the next step of today, then parents will come back to you. Uh, the next step from today then is that the superintendent will uh, take the guidance that the board is offering. Identify who the student group is, and certainly you can always rely on our team. We're happy to support. Um, um, but then we'll fill um, in the blanks. Uh, with the percentages. Uh, so with this guidance from the board, ideally uh, by October thirty-first, the administration. Uh, I think it's October twenty-third that you sent it to the board. And then the board would discuss it on October thirty to thirty-first, something of that nature. Uh, and so by uh, with the administration will take this feedback. Fill in the blanks with the percentages, um, and then bring a draft set of interim goals for goal number one. Uh. So the board can uh, take the first stab at identifying uh, their next steps in this process. Um, and so again, we'll work with you all to uh, in whatever way you all need to get that done. But I think you all have already taken a few steps in that direction. Parents, I saw your hand up next.
Um, thank you, thank you. Um, I know the superintendent, she mentioned arts also, that's in CDOs. And I know that CDOs has safety nets to catch kids so that if they are falling through, that this other. Application can be can be applied for the the children so they can can receive a a Regent's diploma or a uh. Or a regular diploma. Um, also, I know in CDOs they have world languages courses for kids who who comes and, you know, speaking different languages. So i- is that being applied in the district or is this something that we should? Take a deeper dive into uh, how the process, how CDOs works or? Or is there a illustration that we can go by to take a look at? Because um, I'm not quite sure how world languages is being addressed. And um, and and we have a, you know, we have a great CT program here. And I know we have a great arts program here. Let's see how those are being addressed so that we can meet the demands uh, to use this evaluation tool.
Uh, Madam Chair, can I say something?
Uh, yes, please.
And so I want to be clear on what I s- I I what I'm talking about, and I do think Terry hits it on a nail on the head. When she talks about the uh, working with the economically disadvantaged population. Um, and and um, so it wasn't either or. It was if you take, if you're, if you're on a college bound track, that's one thing. If you're on a CTE track, there's, that's another. But I am interested in knowing what's going on with the economically disadvantaged children who are normally the lowest performers. Uh, academically in this district. It ties in what we've been doing. So um, I would like to see something um, that talks about um, the economically disadvantaged children being monitored. To see how many uh, they have the credit courses they're supposed to have. And if and if they are involved in um, the CTE program. Currently, I'm not aware of any program or any uh, thing that's monitoring the amount of children that are 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 in 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 CTE. And who are on that path and how successful they are. Um, I do attend a a meeting at one of my high schools on a regular, um, well, was regular until they. Uh, it started switching around, but and we talked about children being on pathway. But out of a hundred and fifty kids, if we got thirty kids, it was big. That that made it through the process. And so I really want to see the resources, including what we're doing with the uh, college bound courses such as. Middle, early college that we're monitoring and making sure that children are taking the courses. We're paying for them. We're paying for them and that 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 we're monitoring that they are completing the courses and not dropping the courses and um, etc. And so I think there's a need to just monitor that even, you know, we have college, um, we have college bound. Uh, we have relationships with colleges that uh, we have not had a report on in years as to uh, how successful we are. Uh, percentage wise. I guess what I'm looking for is the biggest bang for my buck, our buck. If we're able to spend um, hundreds of thousands dollars worth of money for kids to go on Buff State's campus. I sort of expect that we have a standard, a goal that our children should be achieving. And in the past, when that report came out, we saw a lot of children had dropped courses that we had paid for. And so we don't, I don't know if how effective that program is anymore, but I want to make sure that. We're 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 not throwing good money after, you know, away. And so that's what ultimately for me, that's what goal one was about, making sure that. Uh, that the work that we're doing is going to produce the outcome that we want to see. That's all.
Thank you. Dr. Revere?
I, yes, Anne. So yes, I think it's a really good idea to get a sense of how students are doing it when they take uh, college credits. Whether or college level courses, whether it's AP or college credits. I think that's, that's a good thing to track. And it made me think about a piece of this. So if we're saying in the goal, DPS students who graduate within four years demonstrating proficiency by earning at least one college credit. Um, that's kind of a a soft metric to make sure that students are completely pair, prepared. For college because it can be any college credit. It doesn't necessarily mean English and math. Uh, which is generally what we do with remedial remedial courses. I'm also wondering about students who don't want to do that. Maybe they don't want to take an AP course. Maybe they don't have access to an AP course. Maybe they don't have access to dual enrollment. I do believe though that the district requires a threshold of a grade to even access AP or dual moments. Is that true?
I don't see Anne Batacelli.
She is, hi. We have open enrollment. We don't discourage students who are interested in participating in the dual credit or the AP. However, if a student is not successful in the first couple quarters of a dual credit course, we might not register them. With the university, though they could maintain, they could stay in the course itself. But we might not enroll them for the dual credit. Um, in an AP course, we would generally allow any student who's met the basic prerequisites. So for example, if it was a precal course, we would have wanted them to have the basic math courses on the way up. Um, but we, we would talk to a student who might be a a struggling student about whether. Um, that was the choice that they wanted to make, but we wouldn't tell a student they couldn't participate.
Okay, so that's not an access issue, which is good to know. Um, one of the things that I'm wondering about though is, in that case. Is the college credit in and of itself indicating college readiness? I think, I think that's one thing that's been hanging me up about this. It took me a little while to think about it. But since we're looking at um, the administration recommending specific populations. And preparing for goal to the end of October, drafting interim goals, including percentages. I'm wondering if. If the college credit is going to get at what we want. And if it doesn't, if looking at an average high school GPA. Or looking specifically at math and English scores will help with really figuring out if they're college and career ready. That might be a little redundant. So this is what I want to propose for consideration. We have two goals lower than this on math and English. And so it may be we don't even need. Uh, to have the at least one college credit. Because those are the foundational skills that often are predictor of success in college. So one of the biggest predictors of success in college is how students do in English composition. They get at least a C. They tend to do well all the way through and persist to graduation.
So you're thinking that, so I'm I'm trying to listen for a specific language recommendation.
Specific language recommendation would be either remove earning at least one college credit completely.
Okay.
Or. Demonstrating proficiency by a. Minimum grade or an average grade in math or English. I don't know if that's measurable though.
In a college, in a college course?
No. In a regents course. High school or a minimum um. Score on a regents class, either in math or English.
Are your uh, regents, uh, I do not know enough about New York. Are your regents uh, courses? Um, are those, is there a standardized assessment?
Yes.
Okay.
More rigorous, more rigorous than I think.
But we're, but we're moving away from regents with these new standards that are being impacted.
We don't need to do that. We can drop it. It depends on how. It depends on how long we're going to hold the goals for. This is an open discussion. This is not me pushing one angle. So if we're moving away from that, we may need a different metric based on grades. I know Ms. Botticelli raised her hand.
Anne?
Yes. So I was just going to say that they take the Regents as a junior for English. So I don't know if you're particularly looking at the senior cohort. For senior, all students are required to take four years of English. So for senior year, some would be enrolled in English four, which is our typical course. Many would be enrolled in an AP course. Usually it's AP literature. And then if they're at City Honors, they'd be in an IB course. Some kids might be taking elective credits that are also English at that point in time, like a public speaking course or things like that, which we do through some of the universities. I was going to say, each university works with us to set their minimum requirement to assign credit. So depending on what the college will accept, you know, 80 average or whatever it be, student will only get the credit if they hit that numeric mark.
And thank you. I appreciate that. I'm less concerned about that and I'm a lot more wondering along the lines of what actually are the skills that we are trying to measure to be college ready? We have, we have a standardized assessment with career readiness, right? We have technical endorsement. We have a CEDOS endorsed diploma. We're not going to have Regents. Then I would propose removing at least one college credit. Or, I mean, we could keep it with the understanding. It may not exactly get to what we want. Because when we talk about college credit, it can be any college course. It's not necessarily English or math.
Well, so to that point, would that be a potential edit? To have it be specific for which, to have it specifically call out which courses would qualify for the one college credit?
Could be an option, yes.
Board members, thoughts about this? So the, the under, so board members, the underlying concern I'm hearing is a fear that the statement, at least one college credit, isn't sufficiently rigorous to meet the board's expectation as, as evidence of college. And so one potential would be to, instead of it be any one college credit, have it be one college English or math credit? Anne, does that match what you're trying to suggest?
That, that does map with what I'm trying to suggest, correct?
Board members, thoughts on?
Well, it goes back to, it goes back to what Karen said too. It could be a foreign language. It could be geography. I don't know. A college credit is a college credit. It meets the criteria for college level learning.
But I think, Anne, what you're saying is that the, you would say from your, your experience at the college, if they receive a credit in math or English, those are more indicators than the other, the other areas of instruction.
That's correct.
Okay.
Board members, anyone else have thoughts on this proposal?
I have a question. Reverting back to my earlier question is that we do have children, not just the Buffalo schools, but across the country that graduate from high school, but have to take remedial courses in college. And that's because they didn't test high enough on scoring going to, going to that college or university. And how do we manage that? Because we, in our language, we're talking about graduate with college credit. But I, I don't think we can afford everybody to that standard. And if, I know we can try, we will continue to try. But I, I don't think that we could possibly meet the demands that we can get every child college ready and, and, and that's in that way.
So yeah, what this is proposing, the way I understand it, is that in order to meet this criteria, this expectation, the board, who graduate within four years would have to meet one of three different criteria. Either they achieve one, to your point, non-medial, college English or math credit.
I, I would just get rid of non-medial. I'm sorry. It's more subject determined. Remedial is a college end definition.
How do we capture, so the, the concern I hear Karen's stuff is saying is, how, how do we make sure that it's meaningful?
Achievable.
Achievable. What is the better term to describe that?
The better term? So really ultimately, here's how this works. First of all, I'm just going to say in general, in the higher education world, folks are questioning the value of remedial courses to start with. They tend to put students in supplementary instruction and otherwise. But if we're concerned about this, and we'll take that as an operating assumption, we're concerned about remedial courses. The remedial courses that students get placed into are English and math. Students are not going to get placed into foreign language remedial courses. They're not going to get placed into art remedial courses. They get embedded tutoring or other supports, but they don't get placed into those remedial courses. So if we're worried about students being placed in non-credit bearing courses, which I'm just going to say one more time, federal financially, it doesn't like that. So there's going to be a big sea change coming up with that for those who still have it. My institution does not, but lots do still. What students look for, what colleges look to for placement are standardized testing. So if you're a New York State high school graduate, they'll look at what your minimum, what your threshold for a Regents score is. Or they go to GPA. Or they have you take a placement test. Or they look specifically at what your minimum grades were senior year. And this is to Anne Botticelli's point. Your grades in senior year were in terms of English and math. Generally, what they're looking for is you've got above a C or you have a GPA of three point oh. That's, that's the X factor. Like that's what we're trying to point at if we're worried about remedial courses. As, as Dr. Williams Knight points out, Regents are off the table. Because they're going to go away. We can't keep them as a long-term measurement. It's fine. I totally understand that. I read all of that too. But I think part of what our issue is here, and this speaks somewhat to what Sharon and Terry were both talking about too, just in slightly different areas. We have to figure out what is the measurement in high school? That's predictive of success at the next stage, right? And there's still some lack of clarity on that. That's what I'm hearing. You know, I listened for a while before I said anything. I can speak to higher ed just because I know it. But even with the technical endorsement and some of the stuff that Sharon was telling, was sharing with us about CTE or CEDOS. And for that matter, population, what we need to do, we have three imperatives here. We have to figure out what is our goal with this, with career and college ready? Is it to stop students from taking remedial courses? To demonstrate proficiency in English and math? To receive a technical endorsement? Because right now, what we've got are three different measures. Because we have all of these different diplomas, right? We have all these different tracks with three different measures. But I'm not hearing any certainty that this is going to do what we want it to do for our students.
And I, and I guess what we want to do, Anne, is my thought has always been great. We get a kid, they're, they earn their high school diploma. But our real test is that they're, they become successful in a trade school or a college.
Me too. I'm right there with you.
Right. So that's what my thought is with whatever, like, and how do we measure that? Like, how do we, like, and what, like, exactly what you said? What are the predictors that would indicate that, yes, we're sending a real solid product to a kid, for a kid to be successful?
This is part of the conversation that you all had in August. Do you want to measure that students are being successful after they leave you? Which is the real measure, which is what you pointed to. Or do you want to measure things that are predictive of will they be successful when they leave you? And that's what you all settled on here. Is you're trying to look at those three things and hoping that these are meaningfully predictive of?
Yeah.
So you all had that exact conversation in August. You landed on this approach where you wanted to do predictors. But to your point, if you all, if the consensus of the board is to go the other direction and say, we don't want to look at predictors. We want to look at how are they actually doing two years after they leave us? You can do that. But just as a reminder, you all did have that conversation and, and did knock that direction. It's always prerogative to knock back.
We did.
We did. And I'm okay with predictors. I think just the outstanding question in my mind, I was okay with giving this a try. And I'll still be okay with giving this a try. I don't need to hold up the entire process because these are at least pointing in the right direction, right? But what I'm hearing around, around the screen, as it were, what I'm hearing is that there's still some concern with this about how, how useful or how much this can work and even measurable. So right, when I brought up Regents, Dr. Williams Knight rightly, rightly pointed out, it's not going to be measurable in the long term. So we can't do that. So, but if we're looking at, if we're looking at, I'm almost there. When we're looking at these things that are now listed, right? Specific population, drafting our own goals, filling percentages. We can keep these things. But if we're really, really worried about students having to take remedial courses or coming into college underprepared, my recommendation is we look at English or math. But there's one thing that I would ask my colleagues to consider. We are measuring ELA in math in our other two goals. It may be that we don't need to do this twice.
And so let's test that in a moment when we get down to it. You want to be heard on this. Let's hear one more on this and then for the sake of time, let's check in on goal two and three. And then we can put Anne's question to the test.
Okay, yes. Quickly, I do believe, Dr. Rivera, when she talks about, that's concentrated on English and math. You know, I think that's some of the core subjects that, you know, that's been limiting our children from succeeding in college. And I am, I do have huge concerns about our children taking remedial courses because they drop our rate is immensely high in college for those who don't take remedial courses in college. So I do have a huge concern about that. And another group that we did look at was our ROTC program, which a lot of our children go to the military and how do we grade that also? Is that going to be on the same scope that we're using it now? Or, or do they fall into the same categories for those who tend or want to serve in the military after they leave high school?
Do you have a specific language recommendation that you're thinking about that?
I, I don't know. We should look at it as, or even if you have the bill, I know say yes follows the pathway of our, of our children when they give them say yes scholarship opportunities about their succeeding in college or they graduated from a four-year college or two-year college or a CT program. Those are some of the things that, that organization helps, helps the district with. But like, as was said earlier, we don't see those reports anymore or haven't seen the reports. And for that, it'll, it'll be some primaries basics talks about whether they, how long they roll into the military, if they stay in the military, they seek a career in the military. I don't know. We can never get that information back. But it should have a category because they won't, somebody who goes to a military may not align with the same expectations that we're looking into our guardrails here.
Our military ROTC students exceed the coursework of the regular student. So you don't have to worry about making them a subcategory. They exceed all your expectations and take additional courses.
All right. So it sounds like we've got some form of consensus for goal one. But there's some, but it's hinging on some questions that would come up about goal two and goal three. So let's dive into goal two right quick. The main question here are the exact same. The board asked the superintendent to identify a way of knowing ELA proficiency. The way the superintendent came back with, you should be able to see on your.
AJ dropped. Y'all, I'm not sure about someone's connection. There you are.
The board asked the superintendent to come back with a way of measuring ELA proficiency. The superintendent came back with new, the board asked the superintendent to come back with highest leverage, highest need student group. The superintendent came back with economically disadvantaged students in grades three through eight. And so we just need to test for those two conditions, just like we do with the previous one. And so I want to take them one at a time. First, economically disadvantaged students. Does that fit the board's, is that a reasonable interpretation of the board's expectation of seeing a high leverage, high need student group represented here? The economically disadvantaged. Board members, what say?
Yes.
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 I'm seeing head nodding, hearing affirmative.
Yes, yes.
And let's move on that. Two, two more items to test on. A New York State assessment as a way of evaluating ELA proficiency. Is that a reasonable interpretation of the board's expectation around ELA proficiency? What say you, board members? Yes or no?
I think yes. Yes. Yeah.
Board members, what say?
I think yes. I respect the ELAs because it's an outside independent test. So yeah.
Any, board members, anyone else?
Is there any other choice? I don't think there are any.
Madam Superintendent, you want to speak to that? The question is, are there other, would, are there other for evaluating ELA proficiency for the goal that the board proposed? You're muted, ma'am.
No, it depends. You know, if they would like to have an assessment whereby we can measure how our kids are doing versus students across the state, you know, then that would be an ELA New York State assessment. Last year, you know, we have multiple assessments that we use within district, I Ready, DIBELS. But if we want to have something that is measurable, you know, that all students across the state take, this would be the assessment.
Board members, any other question or comments on this one?
The only other concern I have is that I'm, I'm not sure how it would work because it only, it comes out in August. And I'm not sure, you know, if, if, if it's, if this received after the school year is, has ended. That's the concern I have.
Is that relevant?
Yeah. So August would be early. If we get the scores back by August, that would really be early. It's usually around October that we get the scores back.
Wow.
When, when do you get the preliminary data back from the state? I know you don't get the final data until much later. When do you get the preliminary data back?
Well, we may get the preliminary data between August and October, but usually it's embargoed and we can't publicize, you know, any of it.
That's, that's correct. What I'm, what I'm, the reason I'm asking that is I'm wondering, how early does the administration have data that you all can begin to use to try to make decisions against, even though it's not final data?
It really is like October usually. September, we got it back a little earlier this year. We got it in September. But, you know, I've never seen it where we've gotten it in August.
That's, well, maybe add that to your legislative agenda. Can we get, other, other than that?
Good point.
I'm hearing.
That is a great point.
I'm hearing, so by the way, there are plenty of other states. A whole lot, so I'm, I'm not just throwing that out flippantly. It is in fact possible, other states do it. But it would have to be a priority for it to happen. Where it's happened in other states, it's because it came up, it was surfaced as a priority. And so then it got done. And so if it's never made a priority, just expect it. There's only one other thing here for goal two that I want. And I know that I sound like a broken record here, but I just want to surface this one more time. Our consistent guidance to you all is always that the more broad your goals are, the harder it is for you to understand what the data means that they're telling you. But there are benefits to having. But there are benefits to having them broad. The more narrow, uh, there are, they are, the easier it is for you to understand what the data is telling you. Uh, but there are cons to having it narrow. And so even though there are pros and cons both ways, our coaching is consistently that you'd be better served to have narrower goals rather than broader goals. Ultimately, this is obviously you all's decision. So I just want to test, uh, one more time on this. You have this goal set for grades third through eight. Um, and I want to test for the board. You all want to leave it at three through eight? Or do you want to consider a narrower, uh, grade band? Board members, what say?
Uh, Paulette, what was your, uh, your statement before the, uh, about a big, a big goal isn't? What did you say when we were talking about, um?
AJ told us in our training that if we got 50 gallons of gas and we put it in two trucks, we may go 25, 30 miles, make some progress. If we put it in 10 trucks, then they may make it, uh, a mile. If we put it in 20 trucks, they may make it around the block. You aren't going to achieve anything. So, uh, narrower goals.
That's what, and I would be bringing a bad analogy.
Uh, Larry, what do you think?
So I'm going to once again propose my compromise. I'm one that prefers the goal remain very narrow. Um, but my compromise at the retreat was that we narrow it down to third and eighth grade or fourth and eighth grade and not third through eighth grade.
All right. So there's one specific language change that's recommended. Uh, board members, any other thoughts on this?
So I'm going, I would like to chime in here. So I'm going to stand on what I said originally. And I meant, and I said that we have staff that is designated for each level of these grades that is responsible for performing. And our problem is, is that we have situations where we are sending high schoolers to school who are not reading at a level two. How do we break the cycle if we're not making sure that progress continues to happen? Because as it stands right now, my principals would love, in my district, they would love to have students that came in ninth grade, reading at a level two. The reading at a sixth grade level is a level two. Okay. And so somehow or another, when you say, um, when you say that, what it reminds me of is that this is a machine and it has more than one part working. And if we focus in on the third graders, then when you going to focus in on the sixth graders? When you going to make sure that the sixth graders go into junior high school reading? And the, and the, and the, uh, kids coming out of eighth grade go into high school reading? When are we going to focus in on that? So whatever the board wants to do, that's your philosophy. I come from corporate America and in corporate America, the way it's set up is, is that everyone has accountability, a piece in this equation, and they are to perform. And that's how you find your weak links and your strong links on how the performance happens. But as we continue to look at this equation, I've been on this board long enough. And the same problem that we had in 2011, we still have today. So that's your philosophy. Coming from corporate America, my opinion is, is that we have enough staff to manage what we're doing. It's just a matter of holding them accountable. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So then I. Oh, well, I'm sorry.
Uh, one of the things that we thought as a team would be advantageous is because we made great gains last year for third graders. We didn't want to just leave that. So we wanted to cultivate them now and keep the gains they made in third grade and have gain, uh, goals for fourth grade and for the new third graders, since we've already created all of these systems that seemed to work last year. So then as the students age up, we continue to add those grade levels of students with the expectation that they will continue to build on the gains that they're gaining each year. And at the same time, not leaving behind the new third graders, but the systems. We put so many systems in place for the third graders, um, last year that worked, that worked. We had all the teachers trained, um, you know, all the coaches. And so now that they're in fourth grade, we didn't want to just say, well, we got new goals. We're just going to leave whatever gains you got to chance. You know, we wanted to also focus now on fourth graders and third graders. The following year will be third, fourth and fifth. The following year, third, fourth, fifth and sixth. But if it is the will of the board that, you know, you would like to just, you know, focus on ELA for grades three through eight, then that's what the district will focus on.
So can I just say something with that? So my kid is in the sixth grade. When's somebody going to focus on him to make sure he can read? When is somebody going to be held accountable to make sure that he leaves out of the sixth grade, going into the seventh grade reading? If we're, if, if, if the system that's being described there, where we just go up, up each time, then we're talking about if we're starting at grade three, it's going to take us, uh, an additional nine years to get to the point almost where the kid, well, by the time he graduate, I guess he'll be proficient. If that's what we're focusing, when in essence, okay, each one of the people who is responsible for that grade level or for that work should be held accountable to make sure every child gets it. But the ones that we're focusing in here is the economically disadvantaged. When do we have a system that says that we are a well-oiled machine that is moving forward? And we're making sure that every child in this, at every grade level gets what they, they feel, the parents feel that their children should be getting. When is that system going to exist if this board does not monitor it? Cause it hasn't existed since I've been here.
Thank you. Terri Schuda, followed by Paulette Woods. Um, you know, I, I agree with some of the things you're saying, Sharon, but I'm going to say that a lot of the things that you're talking about are supervision issues and not necessarily goal issues. So if we're saying that teach, that the, there's problems in teaching and learning and grades four, five, six, seven, eight, where is the supervision of instruction? Where is the monitoring of instruction? Those are all, those are all things like where's the gap there? And it's not necessarily like that should be ongoing. And if we're thinking that there's a, a gap and that we're not thinking that our teachers in four, five, six and seven are accountable, why not? Why not? Why? Like, and so that's where I'm thinking. And I'm not sure that that necessarily has to be the, the goal. It, it becomes so such a broad goal that I'm not, it's a, the kind of to the analogy of what Paulette said. We're going to have 50 gallons of gas and then we're going to spread it so thin that, and I thought that we were just, you know, um, have a focus on a specific grade band and that should then carry out through the, uh, the climate and the culture of learning in the school.
Okay. I understand, but here's how I feel. At 1.2 billion?
Mm-hmm.
Spread it and make it happen. That's how I feel. I'm sorry. I can't, I can't after looking at how this game is played in this district, how some schools, I walk into some schools and they are making sure they move that, that needle. And those schools are off the chart, that they're not on the list, they're moving and they're, and then I have some schools that for whatever reason, that every year they're on the list. They've been on the list. So one of the solutions we've always had is when a school is not performing, we'll just close the school down. That's how we normally do it. We'll close the school down. We don't, and then some people can argue, well, you're better off sending them somewhere where they can get better instruction. The system is broke. If we've paid people in a building to do a function and they're not doing it.
Right.
That's, that's the difference between what's happening, Terri. All of this should be goal oriented. There should be not a piece of accountability that doesn't have attachment to it of, of some responsibility and goals. I'm sorry. We're in the, we're in the education business or it's an employment system. It's an employment system if we don't have academics attached to it and outcomes and outputs.
So.
So I don't know. You can work and do what they want. At the end of the day, how are you going to guarantee that my child is going to make sure that they can read by the time they get to high school if they're not reading now and they're in the sixth grade?
So I'm listening to see.
That's how I want to know.
I'm listening to see, is there consensus? So this is, uh, I think the first time, first topic so far today where it's not clear to me one way or the other, where the consensus might be. Uh, does anyone want to propose a consensus?
Oh, I had, I had a comment.
Paulette?
How do you eat an elephant? It's a big system. One bite at a time. So what I'm simply saying is while I recognize we can monitor every grade, three to eight, nine to 10 and everybody else, I think that if we target the third grade, because that's the beginning, if they can't read by third grade, they won't be reading to learn. They can't read. But we could add the eighth grade so we can get some indication of the kids who were lost and where they're at. So if we have third grade and eighth grade, that might be manageable to get both ends and something broader as Sharon's suggesting. But if we go third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth and, I mean, I, I, I don't think we're going to make meaningful progress. So my compromise that would probably be effective would be third grade and eighth grade. That's my suggestion.
You know.
Why eighth grade? Why eighth grade and not sixth grade? Why are you waiting till they going to high school, Paulette? Help me understand that mentality.
Okay.
Why not seventh grade?
Now, I had, I had, oh wait a minute, I had thought about saying sixth grade so you, you would catch the kids going into middle school. But your specific point was what do we do about kids coming in, reading at a level one, not even a two in ninth grade? So if you would prefer third and sixth, I don't have any problem with that as long as we catch the kids at third because that's critical. And then we add, if it's six, add six. But those two would be manageable and make a significant difference so that you're addressing both ends as you, as you, you suggested. I'm just saying compromises add at six or at eight, whichever.
Okay. I'm sorry. I always have high expectations. So, yeah, let's lower the expectations. Let's do that. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that.
Let's increase the achievement. How about that?
Yeah, I think there's some good, you know, conversations in place. And Terrence, I do see your hand. But I like the fact that for once, since I've been on the board, that we have systems in place. You know, as Dr. Um, Williams Knight mentioned, third grade is a critical, um, area. And so you keep building. You got the third, you got the fourth. I like the fact that we need to focus, and this is my opinion. I like the proposal that a couple of board members made, do two grades versus that broad, you know, uh, third through eighth. So if we do three, stick with three and perhaps, I like the sixth, I like seventh. When my boys were in high school, it seemed like that seventh grade, for some reason, it was, uh, one of those difficult grades. And I'm not quite sure what it was, but it affected at least two of my boys. Um, so, you know, that, that's my proposal. Terrence, you're up next.
Yeah, I, I can speak to that, Kathy. Uh, Dr. Brown, that, uh, seven, eighth grade, that's when boys find themselves and, and you're.
That's what it is.
Playing sports and we're, yeah, everything is happening all around at the same time. And women, girls and everything else, you know, step in at school and you thinking about, you know, you growing up and you getting better. So those, those are challenges. Um, I, I just want to say that this, this question that we're going over right now, we talked over a year and a half ago at the board table and we, and we spoke for a very long time about, about what, and that was my question also. What, we concentrate on third grade reading levels and math scores. What's, what about fourth, fifth, seventh, eighth grade? You know, what are we doing about that? The district then said that, so we be, we invested a slew of money into programs and, um, and, and we cut back some of the programs that we were taking to concentrate, like, like, uh, in Gordon program. Um, we, we really, um, did a lot to try to change those narratives about our children reading and math scores. And that all comes on evaluation, um, when we talk about superintendent about the graduation rates in the future. So it's her responsibility to make sure that, that all our children are reading at equitable, um, grade levels. And also that it's responsibility, as, um, Terri said earlier, uh, of the administration to make sure that these are things are being followed through. I just think that we should have a, a system in place that if a teacher is underperforming and, and the teacher is, um, is having some difficulties in the classroom, that those teachers can be identified, those students can be identified so that we can try to give them more help. So I, I think that's how we address it. Every child is not reading at those levels. But we got enough children reading at those levels, uh, lower levels that it is a concern. So I just think that we need some red flags that, that should be able to pop up so that we can identify these students a little better. And, um, and that don't come to the board. That goes to the superintendent so she can try to find some avenues to try to help these individuals, these kids be successful. I'm, I'm going to cut it off at that, but I just think that, I own this goes to the superintendent and that's her job and responsibility.
Uh, I want to check in on one thing, um, as mentioned at the top of the conversation, I'll need to jump right now and so, and, uh, uh, the conversation back over to Leslie, but I want to check in on one thing before I do. There are some areas of consensus that the board has reached regarding goal number two. Um, goal number two and goal number three are very similar construction. Um, is it the intention of the board that the consensus you reach for goal number two also be applied to goal number? Should it keep those in parity or were you contemplating that they would, uh, diverge at this point?
You mean in terms of broadness?
Uh, in terms of each of the areas of consensus. So one of the things that you do, that there is already consensus on regarding goal number two, uh, is that, uh, the board is comfortable with the focus on economically disadvantaged students. Uh, we've offered you a concern that is a fairly broad group, given that that's the large majority of the district. Combine that with third through eighth and it's a very, very broad, uh, goal. You all, um, reached consensus that you're comfortable economically disadvantaged and you reach a consensus that you're comfortable with New York State assessment. You're still discussing the third through eight part. I'll have to jump and you all have to finish that up with, uh, conversation with Leslie. What I'm asking right now, are the areas of consensus that apply to goal two, do those areas of consensus also apply to goal three? Or is that, is that going to be treated separately? I understood that they'd be treated the same, but I'm just checking in right quick.
I believe.
But you believe the same, uh, board members, are they, did you want to treat them the same or different?
Same. Same.
That was my understanding as well. And so whenever.
Same.
So when you do reach a consensus on this last item regarding goal number two, then you're, you are done with this conversation because then you will have reached consensus on the same items for goal number three. And so if you could just, uh, finish, it sounds like you're down to two different options. Either leave it the way that it is, uh, third through eighth grade. Or I've heard two different board members propose, uh, third and eighth grade. And so if you all can reach a place of consensus, which of those two you're going to roll with, then I think you're done for the evening. Um, as always, we're excited to be supportive. We will work with your superintendent so that her team, uh, can get you all the next piece that you need by the 23rd of this month so that you all can be in deliberation about it by the end of this month. Uh, and stay on track to be able to have a, a goals and guard goals for the next five years, preferably no later than January. Um, it's always a pleasure to be here. As always, reach out anytime. Um, I'll see you all later.
Thank you.
Thank you, AJ.
Thank you. Thank you. So, um, with goal two then, um, again, there was a proposal to keep it at three, eight, proposal to do just three and eight, and then I think I heard three and six, um, perhaps three and seven. So, uh, do you have a consensus about where you want to land with this literacy goal? Do you want to try and target, um, one specific grade so that the energy is going there or you want to do others? And I'll also ask, do you want to, you know, I mean, we're trying to keep fewer grades. I'm not sure, um, this may be a question of the superintendent, if the board is tracking two separate. if the board is tracking two separate grades that aren't like three and four right together, is there a need to split this into two? Are the ways the, um, that those, uh, metrics will be assessed different at those grade levels at all?
I.
Any consensus around any of the proposals?
I suggest we do grades three and six.
See the, um, reflection from the district on that, just, just to make sure that, you know, it's something that's achievable, it's something that they, that we feel that, uh, as a board, as we set in our standards, make sure they're high enough, but make sure they're reachable also.
Well, that will come into play when we look at the targets. So, you know, what, you're, they're going to be doing something every year for each of these grades anyway, right? There's gonna be a percentage increase for every grade every year. Um, the one that you want to, you know, say this one is the best and highest use of the resources we have, this is the highest need population, this is the highest target that we want to make a difference with. Um, you know, so you may choose to go over and above the predicted, um, year over year for that one, but that will come in later, um, or as I've heard.
Um.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I would like to recommend that we do, since this board wants to limit what the staff, you know, the limitations on the staff, I would recommend we do three and grade six, so that we can at least know what's happening as they go into secondary school, particularly since data shows that we lose our students around sixth grade. Four and sixth grade are the big, big ones for most part. So, um, since we can't, as a district, with all the departments that we have, or the various people, uh, monitor grade levels for five grades, um, because that's too difficult, this board feels, then I think we should at least look at sixth grade as they go into secondary, so that we can at least find out, try to make sure they're reading by that age.
So just wanna make a point of clarification, I have not heard the board saying that, um, or I, do not anticipate the administration not tracking every single grade. Um, the point is, is, is the board, through the data that you have received, through the work that you have done, are you prepared to actually get very highly focused on one, you know, one particular thing that you wanna track the data on? It does not mean the data is not gonna be tracked on every other piece throughout the district. Um, but the board is receiving an understanding about something that's happening for this particular um, group that you're identifying in your goal. You do not, you know, the board, you have a certain amount of time during the board meetings, you're gonna have, um, their monitoring reports, they're gonna give you a lot of information. Our thing is just, again, that, you know, in here, the actionability of that data, your ability to influence and, you know, monitor that and understand the strategy or whatever, is going to be lessened if you choose that broad grade band. It doesn't have to do with, the, the goal you're setting right now does not have to do with the, um, capabilities of the system to monitor all students, so I just wanna make that point.
Yeah, and I think, just to add, uh, I think. Yeah, I think the broadness is too broad, you know, use the example of the gas. So I think this board, you know, with the discussion that, um, instead of making it all those grades, we limited it to two grades. Third and or, I would say seventh, but Sharon says sixth, but sixth is fine. Um, those two grades, Dr. Kanye Williams Knight, is that something reasonable that makes sense to you and your team?
Um, you know, I think just as, uh, Leslie shared, we do track all of our grade levels, and we do have supports, um, board member Shuda, you were before becoming a high school principal and elementary school principal. And so you're aware of, you know, things like walkthroughs that happen on a daily basis, grade level meetings where you're tracking data, literacy block times that we have in place, RTI pieces. So we do, we do that for all grade levels. Um, I do think it would be advantageous though for the board if you're really looking at measuring and honing in, while we're doing all of that broad work anyways, you know, really focusing for me and working with my staff if it's two grade levels. And, you know, seventh grade is a difficult grade, so if we did sixth grade, that would be good, because it would be getting the students ready, and we would hope to see some change by the time they get to seventh grade. So, you know, if we wanna do third grade and seventh grade or sixth grade, that's fine. I think it would be advantageous for us to look at one or two grade levels.
Right, and I think that, that, it doesn't mean that we don't care about the other grades, but it means that we're serious about doing this work correctly. And, you know, and that should then spill over.
So, um, I just wanna throw this out here, you're, right now, the way, you know, the, the point of having, you know, smart goals is so that everyone understands exactly what you're looking at. Everyone understands when you get those reports exactly what you're measuring against. Um, when we are asking if we do a three and a seven, what you're asking in that percentage is that we want from this date, we want the percentage, which is, we all understand the percentage should be at this point on this date, to in a period in five years, we want it to grow to this point. And that's where the board has some, you know, you have some flex there as well, in terms of what you want the push to be, how you want that, you know, that acceleration to be. One of the things that I would, um, you know, just y'all consider, is do you have two separate goals now? If you have one for third and one for seventh, because are you gonna be monitoring those percentages? You know, what it's gonna be right now is an average of those two.
Is it seventh, or did we say sixth?
Oh, six, yeah, yeah, sorry. So.
Could you re-ask the question?
So, yeah, just does the board, again, if you put three, if you put, again, more than one grade band, the percentage you start with, the percentage you end with, the, the numbers that you're tracking are going to be an, uh, an average of those grades. So you're gonna get less clear understanding about what's actually happening in third, and that's the point of third, again, was that it just is a critical literacy year. Um, so you really wanna understand what's, what's going on there. Um, so if you wanna understand, if you really wanna understand what's happening in third, what's happening in sixth, consider having two goals.
Can I just, we, when we wrote the yearly goal, we did, uh, a grade six math goal, right? That was.
Yes.
Right, and we did a grade three literacy goal?
Correct. And that way, you're gonna get really targeted understanding around that percentage of literacy for the beginning of the year, end of year. These are similar, um, these are just, again, a bigger, broader, um, you know, insight or outside, bigger, broader perspective on it.
So what are our thoughts? Uh, we wanna keep the three and six, or do we wanna do what we did for the yearly by looking at the third grade for literacy and the grade six for math? Or that's, I just, I'm just wondering what everybody thinks about that.
Mm-hmm. You can't do a goal A, I mean, I'm sorry, you can't, can you do a goal two, and then a goal two A?
You can, and that's not what we're, we're not gonna.
Just asking.
Yeah, yes, so, again, you have three right now, so you have, um, quote unquote, room. Um, I really appreciated your, um, your, uh, desire to really focus coming out of that meeting. Um, it's up to y'all, this is, this is a, you know, do you wanna do three and six in the one, so that you have an average of those, um, numbers that you're tracking? Do you wanna have two? Do you wanna have a literacy at three, a literacy at six, a numeracy, so you end up with five, is probably what. Or do you wanna stick with three goals and really focus in on, uh, three with the literacy, six with the numeracy, which you did for this year? Um, do you wanna stick with three through eight? So this is y'all's decision.
Yeah, I like the way we did it for the one-year goal. We did the literacy, and then we did the math for the other grade. That way we'll stick with three goals.
Any consensus for any of the things that are on the table?
I, um, I would say that it would be a focus, and it goes back to that analogy of, uh, the fifty gallons of gas, and now we have the two, if we have the two groups, then we can really put the fuel in and see what progress we can make.
Yes. Terrence?
Um, I'm happy that gas prices are dropping, but, uh, I, I prefer the three goals, and, um,
Yeah.
I think that it really got a consensus of, of based of, of what we're trying to implement, and, uh, and give, help give the district direction.
Can you, um, just, sorry, to be real clear about what three, then?
Uh, we, we, we're going, we're going with, uh, with the college readiness. And we're going with, uh, the literacy.
For third grade.
With third grade, and I, I will follow the lead, I, I, I do prefer all grades because they are, are important. Um, I prefer the three through eighth, but it was consistent with the, with the board that they wanna go three and three and seventh grade, third and seventh grade. I, I will follow, but I, I just, I strongly believe that we need to go, uh, uh, three through eight.
So you're for the original literacy, three through eight?
Yes.
Okay, so so far, I understand. Kathy was for, um.
I, I only say that because we have a lot of kids that's, 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 that showing through no age group is showing a lot of mental health issues that's going on through the homes, through the community and schools, and we see a lot of, uh, a, a lot of our suspensions, um, sitting those, at those levels. So I, I, the reason why I like to concentrate, you know, on all those grades is, is basic the needs and trying to address those needs, so it, it might be a grade that maybe drop it, but might be some other, other, um, um, red flags that goes up to why that child's acting in that manner or not learning at, 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 at a approved rate. So that's why I said those.
Okay, and now just, again, well, I don't want this to be seen, if y'all are setting a goal, it is not about trying to shine a light on every single thing in the district that needs to happen. That is not a goal. If you are setting a goal, you are trying to pull out something that, again, feels like a very high need, a very high point of leverage that you can make a big difference. That's what we're trying to get to with y'all's, with the goal setting, so.
Well, for me, making a big difference is catching those group of children that are, you know, feel like they're being harmed or bullied, don't wanna come to school, dropping out of school, those that, that's going through, um, mental issues, uh, uh, those that are being, uh, abused and, and mentally, physically type ways, so, so.
So this is a goal around ELA assessment, specifically how they're performing on the ELA exam.
But these are some of the avenues that we can identify children who maybe have, 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 have a, like, uh, a large grade drop, or, or not paying attention in class, so that we can, I mean, it's another avenue that we can identify. There's more eyes on, on our issues that we have here in Buffalo. That's why, that's why it's that way.
You're taking your fifty gallons and dividing it up too many times. If we take the fifty and divide it to two, the, the likelihood of success and measuring metrics is better.
No, I, I had a story that a kid wasn't coming to school because, because he, they didn't have any clothes, and the family didn't have any clothes. And so that will affect the, affect, uh, the way that they learn, to affect their math scores, um, able to read, learning scores, learning ability, I mean, it's, we're talking about college readiness, but we gotta start at a younger age, so I, I, I'm gonna stick to, to my decision about three through eight, and those are some of the reasons why I don't wanna hold this, this, uh, committee up too much.
That's understandable. You know, I was a child protection worker for twenty-three years, and what you just gave an example of has not changed. The complications of our students is real, we get that. But right now, we have to look at, you know, what's reasonable in terms of measures. And, you know, as Dr. Wright, I mean, um, Williams mentioned, and some others mentioned, I think Terry, there's monitoring that's going to take place throughout the year with our students. And I think the third grade and the sixth grade group here, we're going to begin to see those drops that you're talking about, or not. But we have to focus on the outcomes. And if, if, that, those, how many pounds, how, how many gallons of gas, whatever it is, is not going to mitigate all of the complications that exist in this district and across this country. Anybody else?
If you want to get the biggest lift possible for a student group, you've identified economically disadvantaged students, if you wanna get the biggest list, lift possible, you will have the tightest focus possible.
And that's our goal, I would say.
Right, but if we have children that's not economically disadvantaged, but still have mental illness, it's, it's, it's still a, a set of problems that, that our teachers face in the classroom with the kids, and trying to educate them and train them, and, and, you know, we still have a large suspension rate that happens, you know, we, we cut down on our suspensions, but, um, sometimes children are being sent back in the same areas, you know, that, that where the friction is coming from. So we, it, it's just, it's just a, a better means for me, I feel better if, if it was three through eight. I mean, rest of the board can vote how they want to, or how they feel, but that's just the way I feel.
Three to six, three and six is my vote.
And do you wanna do two different, or keep them as, yeah?
I'm not sure if making it an average would mask too many things, so I kinda would think keeping them separate.
Keeping them separate.
So doing, uh, goal two and three literacy, goal two would be literacy, third grade. Goal six would, or goal three would be sixth grade literacy. Is that what you're, am I hearing you correctly?
I, I, I thought that you had, when you put our goals, that they could have an A and a B, so that it wouldn't be.
No, no. That's what I see. No, Kathy was, uh, doing some wishful thinking there.
Well, then, I do, I do feel averaging the statistics would mask both grades.
I agree.
So you're in favor if you're going to do two grades to pull them out to set their individual goals?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree as well.
Shuda?
The same.
Same which?
With Paulette, um, that, um, I believe by putting, combining, uh, the data for the two grade levels wouldn't give us a true picture. So I believe that they need to be, uh, separated.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I agree with, I agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you were at one, only at third, so you're now at, uh, two separate for three and six?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, uh, for President Kotman, is still at three through eight, correct?
No, I think she's. Sharon, what was yours? Three, you had two grades, right?
I agree with Terrence Heard, that we still, I still agree that we should monitor all five grades, but this board does not feel that that's what they should do, so what they wanna do at this point, because we've all been sitting here eight years, at least, and we've seen that it did not mean that the data was not being reviewed, it wasn't being monitored. It didn't move to the degree that we got what we needed for our high schools. Okay, and so I get, I, I get it, so whatever you guys decide to do is fine with me at this point. Okay, because obviously it requires more work for everyone involved, including the board, to monitor five grades. So all it is, is five grades. Okay? Okay? And it requires more. So whatever the board wants to do is fine with me at this point.
Okay. So then three, we have three for three, uh, two separate goals, three and six, three and six, three and six. Uh, I will take that as a fourth. Um, Anne Rivera, is Dr. Rivera still on?
No, she had to jump off.
Okay. And, um, uh, Larry Scott?
Larry said two grades before he left.
Two grades. Okay. Okay. So I'm going to put this down as a, a goal two for grade three literacy, ELA. Sixth grade also has the New York State, um, assessment, correct, Dr. Williams? Night? Yep. Okay. So, um, I will draft those two. Then it will go back. And we also are looking at when that data is ready. So the date on here instead of August will probably change. We did change that, I think, for the 24, 25. So I'll go back and look at that. But that would be when the data is, um, countable to be ready. We're not going to set that goal before then. Okay. So for numeracy, we had, uh, what do you want to do on this? Right now it's the percentage, um, of economically disadvantaged and we're good with the New York State assessment. Grade levels for this. Numeracy is different. There's not that third grade hump to get over. Typically, um, it's looking at eighth grade in terms of preparedness for higher math. Um, is there a proposal for this?
Well, I would like to say if they can't do sixth grade math, they can't do seventh, eighth grade math. So if the fundamentals don't exist by sixth grade, then they're, they're behind the eight ball. My two bits.
So what's your proposal for this then would be six, uh, two different, a six and an eight? You're muted. Sorry, sorry.
Feel, I feel the same for both literacy and numeracy, what should be monitored in this district. So whatever you do for literacy, fine. But if they can't do basic math, they're not going to be able to do junior high math.
Three and six is my vote.
For numeracy? Yeah.
Yes. Consistent. I, I don't want to scatter our efforts. I want, um, so I, I want the third to catch the early, the sixth to get them before they start messing up in higher grades. Third and sixth seems to be pivotal.
Um, just in terms of, I guess, curriculum, is there a specific sort of measure at third grade around numeracy? Are there specific skills that are, like if you don't catch these then sort of? Dr. Williams night or?
Yeah, there's a trajectory. Um, I have two grandkids in third grade. And, um, they're doing modification. Something else, but I know they're it's a trajectory. So third graders are doing some things.
I, I guess I just have a question. Does this have to be done tonight since we're looking at modifying some of it where the staff can sit down and look at the data? And see if in fact, you know, third and sixth grade is where are we just, you know, just deciding tonight that, you know, we got to come up with some grade levels?
But I, I'm a little confused. What do you mean with to look to see?
Well, I mean,
What the three and six?
Right. So we talked about seventh grade, maybe seventh grade is where we're showing real deficits. And so we know we need to do something before seventh grade. Maybe.
Right. So being sixth grade. Yeah.
So you're saying looking at the trend in data? That.
I mean, unless tonight is the deadline that.
Well, no, there's no deadline. Y'all need to get this right and where it feels, you know, where you've all had an opportunity to look at it. Um, I would say that, you know, like what, what do you estimate being a turnaround for that? That you could get back to the board with that information?
Um, I would say a week is fair.
They'd be good in order.
Make some recommendations to the board and send it out via email. And they can take a look at what the recommendations are that will, would be based on data and not just tonight. You know, it feels like.
But I'm confused. Help me understand since the data is already being worked. What the board is requesting is to look at two sets of data. But you already said that your team is already analyzing the other data. So if.
I don't have it tonight at my fingertips.
No, no, I know. I'm not saying you have it at your fingertips, but what difference would it matter? What the board requests when you're already making, man, monitoring that. So if the board says they want to monitor grade three and grade six, okay, and you, when you have your staff take a look at it, they decide that they need to put more work in grade seven, then what's the harm? We're all, you working, we working at six, you working grade seven?
Yeah, it just depends. It depends on if the board is interested in those high leverage, you know.
Yeah. That was the, that was the request. Yeah. Where, where do you really want to be paying attention to understand, you know, like if, uh, again, if this is going to, if this is a more critical year than another, that might be where the board wants to pay attention.
That's a good point.
Well, what I'm curious to know, why I'm thought set sixth graders, I'm curious to know what the product is that's being sent to the junior high schools. That's what I'm curious to know. So we have people who are monitoring our, um, grades, uh, K through sixth grade. So by the end of grade six, if it's been a successful, there should be something to show for it. That's what I'm looking at. That's what, we've done what we're supposed to do and gotten them ready for junior high school. If we take and look at the, the sixth grade numbers, they should be reflective. So that seventh grade should be in better shape than the previous year. That's why I said six. That didn't just arbitrarily come out of my head. It came out because that's, that's the end of their, uh, uh, grade school application, ed- education.
So critical grade, you know, last year when we look at our ELA scores from last year, not 2024, 2023, sixth graders made the most gain, you know, that year. Now this past year, that wasn't the case, but the year before they did. So that's the kind of data I'm talking about us having a chance to take a look at a couple of years of data. You know, we know, I mean, I know you, everybody feels COVID, you know, is over, but the impact of COVID is still continuing. And so I just want to have a chance for the team and all fairness to make some data-driven, informed recommendations to the board for you all to consider. It's up to you. You can choose tonight. If you want to say sixth grade and third grade, then that's what we'll focus on. If you want us to go back and take a look and in a week provide you with, you know, this is why this is a good rationale for third grade and sixth grade. I think we all agree on third grade. It's the next grade level because we're selecting two grades that we want to be able to take a look at. And if the sixth grade is six and maybe seventh, it could be eighth. We know that those are, um, important years. Those are the years when kids apply to high school that we pull data from. So we know that, you know, those are, are critically important grades. That's all grades are.
Right. I, you know, and I think that information superintendent would help us. And they could then take a look at the sixth grade and, well, all the grade levels, but the eighth grade. Like I, I'm trying to like, like, I'd like to see some data to say if the more leverage would be in the eighth grade or in the sixth grade. So I think if that's, um, myself, it, um, my point of view would be that it would be worth, um, making that decision, uh, after we see some data.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's fair.
I do have a question. What type of data are, are we respectfully received? Uh, it's not, no time for state testing or anything like that, but are we receiving the last year data or are we receiving, um, current test scores? How, how would that be given to us?
It would be, um, the team looking at the last two years of data. So last year, well, really 2024's data and 2023's ELA and math data for sixth graders, seventh graders and eighth graders.
Okay.
And again, I think, sorry to cut you off. Um, I think what you're wanting to understand, what the board wants to understand is where are the critical cut points? Where is, where is that like real momentum around numeracy to be looked at? Not what the current reality is.
Right.
Current reality is what it is, but where is it an important time for the board to really be paying attention? Okay, we're going to miss X, Y, or Z. We're going to miss higher math if we're not here. And those, that's what the, you know, I'm, that should be coming back to the board. When are, where are these? Where are these, you know, where are those cut points?
Superintendent? I, I, I know, I know it'd be kind of hard, you know, in this conversation to talk about this, but I, I would somehow like see some correlation to attendance and the grades also. If, if, if that's anywhere possible, or, or is that something that we can dwell on? But, uh, seeing attendance and, and, and accuracy towards the grading or what our kids are doing. I, I think it's a, it's a direct correlation in some cases. That, that could be addressed.
I'll jump in. You did get a, um, you got a large data, um, sheet from them that talked about a lot of things. Attendance is one of those things. So I'll point you back to that if you wanted to look at that. Um, I do think that what our guidance is that the, um, you know, the superintendent has.
I was referring to the new report, to the new report that, that she had deliverable that she will have.
She's not, yes. So what we were asking her to do was to give you an understanding around ELA and numeracy and what those critical junctures are where you need to be paying attention. What those critical grade levels are where that, you know, that's really, the flashlight really needs to be on that. Where you really want to emphasize, um, something, you know, something different happened with the district. What's going on with it?
One of the reasons I say that not to because, not because of the attendance rate, it's just because I know some, some schools had trouble after COVID when they had maybe an English class first period and kids were getting to school late or the buses wasn't getting them there on time. And, and tho- those programs suffered because of that first period. Kids, kids missed the first period on a consistent basis. Some, right? Like high school kids were like putting their younger siblings on the bus. So which inherently, you know, they, they might've missed class time for it also. So it, this is number of reasons or caveats why, why I'm asking for that. But, if the board don't feel that that's something that needs to be said, I'll just, maybe we kept an independent report or just, uh, something we can put out just to see where that lies at.
Dr. Ballack puts out a report, um, and I can't remember the last one, but it seemed like she put one out last month, Terrence, on attendance for every school. So we may want to look at that as well or reach out to her.
And I'm thinking too, um, if we get their data, um, regards to eighth graders and then we're really watching their data closely, we could then put some extra preventative measures in when those kids become freshmen. So it might be useful, uh, for long-term planning.
All right. So right now I just want to go back to where we are. We have, um, uh, for ELA, you were at a three and a six. Am I understanding correctly that you want to wait on the three and six for ELA? Or do you want to go ahead and stick with that tonight? Or do you want to um, wait until you have some understanding around the numeracy as well?
I think we want to wait. I, my vote would be to wait.
My vote would be to wait as well, given, you know, the superintendent, her keen to, um, give us the information in a week.
Okay. Um, I see that you have a work session on the ninth of October.
No, we don't.
No. All right. Um, you only have one during the month?
Yeah. We have our regular meeting has been rescheduled for next week. And then, uh, right, the, uh, the general board meeting is next week.
It's on the 16th?
No, the 16th has been canceled.
The meeting for the 16th has been moved to the ninth because of, uh, scheduling conflicts. The next work session won't be until the first week in November.
Okay. So, but you are convening as a group on the si- on the ninth?
Yeah.
Only for, for a business meeting. Right.
Correct. And so could you consider, if you get the information from the superintendent, can y'all make a decision at that meeting when you'll all be together?
Yes.
You want these goals to be. That was what we were hoping to get to tonight. Can you make that decision on the night? If you get the information by, when would you have that information to them, Superintendent?
Monday.
Uh, Monday to seven?
Yeah.
So at that meeting, can you put some space in the agenda for discussion, final discussion about the goals and guardrails based on the data received on the seventh? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay. So I do want to go, I want to just, we are here. We need to finish this, um, if we can. The guardrails. So with the guardrails, um, there were no big, uh, sort of fill in the blanks with this. I just want to make sure we, we have two guardrails at this point. They're up on the screen. One again has to do with equitable allocation. The superintendent will not allow buildings to be without necessary resources based on academic and social emotional need to attain student achievement targets utilizing modifications to the budget system. This is where we are right now. Unless you have some very clear language, um, modifying this, I'll assume we have consensus around this.
Um, I'd like to say, um, I have something I'd like to, uh, see what the board feels. I feel that, um, this guardrail is very general. And I'm not sure when is the super, when are we directing the superintendent to make sure that the building has what it needs? Are we doing it during the budgeting time? Are we doing it throughout the entire year? This is, this is ambiguous to me in this, um, in this request. The superintendent will not allow buildings to be without necessary resources based on academic and social emotional needs to attain student achievements, targets utilizing modifications to the budget system. So is that the end of the year? Or is that throughout the year? What is that? I'm trying to get clearly because normally, um, there is some extra money in the budget. If a need is determined in the middle of the year, shouldn't it be addressed is where I'm, I'm, I'm wondering. Um, I'm just curious to know what out of board feels about that.
I, I'm going to rebut on that also, um, President. We have, um, some schools in dire need of, of certain things. Uh, uh, we got leaky roofs, we got boiler systems, uh, that's always in need of repair, windows. We got equipment that's inside the school that break down, uh, desk that breaks. So I, I'm not quite sure. I, I read it also. I'm trying to try to show how we monitor that and monitor, you know, which building needs what. So I don't think we got a tool in place that we can monitor our buildings. We, the board needs to talk to the principals in the schools to get a reflection back. But sometimes, you know, that, that, that may be, you know, harmful to that building and that school, not saying retaliation and like that, but, uh, just because they're supposed to talk to the ASLs and, um,
This is supposed to be, Terrence, I think this is just edu- academics we're talking about. There's a department that should already know the needs of the building as far as, uh, uh, the, uh, operations of the building. If there's a problem, uh, capital needs or whatever. My understanding is, is that this is just based on academics. If for some reason or another, say for,
I thought every guardrail had to have interim guardrails. It was a requirement.
Well, you don't have those yet. You don't have any, yes, I was going to bring that up. Thank you, uh, Board Member Woods. You don't have any interims yet. So we don't have any proposals. The bottom line is that the board is saying we want equitable allocation to be a priority. And what you have laid out here gives the superintendent and her. And what you have laid out here gives the superintendent and her team some indication about what you want to see. They will come back to you with three different interims and that will be the way that you measure and monitor whether or not she's upholding this guardrail.
But how does, would the superintendent report to the board out about issues happening at a school and then, then how she addressed it? How, how did this get monitored? That's what I'm trying to understand.
That's what I'm saying, is she's going to come back to you. This is what you have written. This is what the board has written, that you want to have a guardrail around. She will come back to you with three different ways that they intend to monitor this over the ten, next five years. You will get a monitoring report on the, um, guardrails, um, at least once a year. You'll get a report on each of, you know, the interims. Or on each of the guardrails. They could be, all the interims could be monitored at once. But you don't have that yet. You don't have the response that they're going to, how they're going to, uh, monitor this yet. That is up to the superintendent and her team to determine.
So there's three interims per guardrail?
Yes, three interims per guardrail, three interims per goal.
Okay. So that answers your question, Terrence.
Yes.
Good, okay.
Yes, yes, exactly. I was trying to, just want to make sure to see how it works because I was not clear about.
Yeah, you don't have it yet. So you're, yeah, you're, yeah, yeah, you're, you're curious for a good reason. So, yes.
Right.
All right, so, um, is there any, again, was there any proposed change to the language here? And then the other one was culture and climate. Superintendent shall not allow for the standards, uh, shall not allow the standards for conduct, character, and support to be unenforced, including suspension, safety, and climate expectations. Um, can I ask just a clarifying question? Is conduct, character, and support, is that a Buffalo-specific term or?
It is, that's our code of conduct.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure that everybody, y'all, you know what you're talking about. Okay, so i- if there's no, if no further need for clarification on either of these, um, they will go through, and again, our next steps then, um, there are two next steps. The immediate next step is that, um, and I'll send you a follow-up email with this. Superintendent, the immediate next step would be that the administration recommends a specific population for the college and career, um, goal. Um, there was a, one mention of perhaps looking at economically disadvantaged, but that the, you look at what that high leverage, higher needs population might be and make a recommendation there. So that is one piece. The second piece, again, was going back and looking at where are those inflection points for E L A and math and coming forward with a recommendation about what those grade levels are that you, um, you know, so they can weigh whether or not they want to do three-six, um, for E L A, what they want to do. So, um, and those two things should be done as quick as possible. Um, if the, um, you were going to have it ready on the seventh, you're going to send them an email on the seventh, which is Monday for that. Um, and I'm guessing the population one can be done as well?
Yes.
Thank you. And then at your meeting on the ninth, um, you will have a discussion, um, and if, I would recommend, um, having it facilitated, I'm happy to do that, uh, but I want you to have a discussion around tying up these goals and guardrails. So that would be on the ninth, okay? Um, once you, again, the, the administration is not going to start working on this. They should not start working on this until the board is set. So if you decide to set on the, you agree, come to an agreement on the ninth about what you want your final goals and guardrails to be, that gives them the go-ahead to get in, working on what the draft interims are and then to look at those percentages and give you some understanding about historic performance so that you can make an understanding about what you want the target performance to be. Okay? And we have two dates for that set, October twenty-third and October thirty-first. So, um, you know, every time we're pushing up on that, we're giving them less time to do this. So I just want to be clear, everybody's good with the calendar so far. Yep. Okay, well, um, thank you all. I know that was really stressful work tonight, but I, uh, we made some progress. So I thank you all for that. Um, thank you for your time and attention. Thank you for coming tonight for this portion of it. Any further questions from me? All right, I'll leave y'all be to get on with your next, um, your next portion of the meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This concludes the executive committee session, and I'm going to, um, hand over the torch to, uh, Board Member Terry Shuda, Educational Support.
Um, hello, here we are. Uh, we're going to have a short presentation, uh, as, uh, um, the update, uh, the, the annual update from the district on bullying prevention protocol. And we just want people to be, um, mindful that, um, specific situations you're working with in specific schools to just, uh, keep in mind that, uh, uh, we don't want any, um, students to be put in a compromised, uh, situation by telling their story, uh, i- in this public forum. If you have any, uh, discussions that you would like to refer to Dr. Cressis, uh, he is, uh, willing to, uh, speak to you about specific situations. This, again, is an overview. And I am going to, I, as a superintendent, if you'd like to say anything?
Um, just very briefly, thank you so much, uh, Chairwoman Shuda, that this is a refresher. Um, I believe that, um, staff provided, um, an update, maybe last year on it, but it's always good for us to all be mindful about, um, bullying awareness. And in fact, I think this is the month that we are focusing on bully awareness. Um, and so what you'll hear about tonight are definitions. Oftentimes, people think every conflict is bullying. And there is an official definition for what bullying, uh, truly is. And you'll hear about some of the things the staff are doing to make sure that our principals, assistant principals, and everyone is aware of exactly what bullying is and that the district has a zero tolerance on bullying. So, um, I will turn things over at this time to Doctors Brown and Mrs. Jaznowski to begin the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, and good evening Superintendent Williams Knight, honorable board members and the listening audience. We will present this evening on, uh, anti-bullying intervention updates. And so as Dr. Williams Knight just shared, while October marks National Bullying Awareness Month, our district has a daily continued commitment beyond the month of October to teach school-wide behavior expectations to support and promote a welcoming and safe environment. I will begin the presentation by providing information regarding Dignity for All Students Act, also known as DASSA, DASSA Training, and how the district supports anti-bullying strategies. And Chief Jaznowski will provide an overview of school-level reporting of a DASSA complaint and anti-bullying strategies. Next slide, please. So we always keep, uh, our five-by-twenty-five goals at the forefront of our work. And tonight's topic primarily focuses on the pathway of services for our neediest children and families connected to Goal Three. Next slide, please. So the Dignity for All Students Act, it is a state law that was established to protect all students from harassment, bullying, and discrimination. And it became effective on July first, two thousand and twelve, and it was amended to include cyberbullying effective July first, two thousand and thirteen. Next slide, please. According to New York State Education, the goal of DASSA is really to provide all New York State public school students with a safe and supportive environment, and it should be free of, of discrimination, intimidation, taunting, harassment. And it doesn't only apply to what happens on school property, but also at a school function. Next slide, please. So what is, uh, bullying? So according to the United States Department of Education, the following are general characteristics of bullying, which is an imbalance of power. Students who bully oftentimes will use their power, such as physical strength, uh, access to embarrassing information, um, for popularity. Also is, oftentimes is repetition. Bullying behaviors happen more than once or have the potential to happen more than once. And also, it can be deliberate intention, intention to hurt someone. Next slide, please. So according to, um, the definition in terms of protected classes, I will not read all of them to you at this time, but you can see here that it, it, the protected classes, it has to do with race, color, weight, gender identity, but there are more protected classes than what you see here on the slide. Next slide, please. So the DASSA training and coordinators. So DASSA per, requires that all schools provide training for all staff and students, and it includes bullying and cyberbullying. So this summer, we required all building level administrators, again, to do their annual training, and the expectation was prior to the start of the school year and for them to turnkey that information to their staff so they are aware of what bullying is, what DASSA is, what the requirements are. Also, the training was offered to all central office staff as well. Last year, our principal meetings, it included DASSA topics and interventions. And not only, uh, last year did that happen, but this year, we also plan to do that as well. There's a meeting next week and we will spend some time having, uh, providing an overview for DASSA. Uh, district team members will attend our Alberti, the, the Alberti Bullying Abuse Prevention. It's an annual conference. We attended last year as well, and it's going to be held on October twenty-third. And the DASSA coordinator at the school level, it's the building principal, the co-DASSA coordinators are assistant principals. However, the school student support team, which is inclusive of the school counselors, social workers, psychologists, that team can be designated by the principal to assist with investigation. And Chief Jaznowski, she'll go more into detail with, uh, the investigation portion of it, of this. The district coordinator for DASSA Training and Resources is Matthew Peck, the supervisor of social, emotional, and wellness supports. He provides all of the district, uh, training. And the district coordinator for collecting DASSA data and state reporting, that is Dr. Laura Samoski-Peters. She's the Assistant Superintendent for, uh, O S A Data Protection Officer. Next slide, please. So how we support at the district level for schools. So the Buffalo Public Schools, we follow a multi-tiered systems of support. So you see tier one at the bottom, it's in all green. It, it encompasses the entire school with court instruction. Uh, we share the code of conduct. Schools teach school-wide expectations along with basic interventions such as restorative practices. So approximately seventy-five to ninety percent of our students respond to tier-one supports. When students need additional support beyond that tier-one level, they go into what we call the tier-two supports, and they are implemented for some students, such as a check-in, check-out. That is when they have a, a trusted adult in the building that they check in in the morning, and then they check out before they leave the day. They're able to share how they did, how they progressed through, throughout the day with their guardians. Also, restorative practices is also part of the tier-two. Social academic instructional groups, they're known as the SAD groups. So approximately ten to twenty-five percent of the students respond to the, are part of the tier-two strategies or supports. When students don't respond to tier-one and tier-two supports, as you see at the very top, the tip, the red, more intensive and individualized supports, such as individual counseling, wraparound services, we have a plethora of resources right within the schools. Again, I mentioned the student support team, the psychologists, the school counselors. Uh, we have mental health professionals. Typically, there is less than ten percent of the student population within this tier. Next slide, please. So in order to augment what is offered at the school level, we were really pleased in the Division of Student Support Services, uh, was awarded three major grants to, again, to support what is going on in the schools. So the first, uh, uh, grant was the Project Prevent Grant. Uh, that grant falls directly under the social, emotional, and wellness supports under the Division of Student Support Services, and it's a federal grant to prevent community violence, and it's being implemented in six of our schools, and it has a five-year term. So last year was the planning year, the implementation is already underway. It focuses, it's going to focus on a mental health symposium that the project administrator is planning for right now, uh, student health ambassadors and comming rooms. Also, we rewarded, uh, another grant, a New York State grant, Recoves, and that provides mental health supports. And again, we talked, uh, this evening about the pandem- pandemic and the impacts of that, and that is what that, uh, that is what the mental health supports will support students who are still, uh, who are struggling, who are experiencing trauma, and it's being implemented across the entire district. We were really pleased this summer, there was a very successful mental health and the arts summer program, it was inclusive of murals, and that was directly in our crisis prevention and intervention, uh, department. And our last grant that we received was a New York State grant to provide anti-bullying training and support. And it, and this grant also is going to be implemented across the district, and it was awarded in January, two thousand and twenty-four. And we're going to, we're utilizing those funds to train the school-based wellness teams. There's been professional development full days all throughout the summer and during, and on Saturdays, it, we started off the school year with that. And this year, we're going to dig deeper and make sure that DASSA is going to be one of the focal points on our school wellness teams. Next slide, please. So this is our resource hub, and it comes from the Department of Social, Emotional, Wellness Supports within the Division of Student Support Services. So it is our toolkit. This has been shared with all of the schools, and they have found it to be very useful. It's like a one-stop shop. Everything is in one place. And you'll see, um, if you can see on the screen, there is a link, they're all hyperlinked. There's a DASSA coordinator toolkit. It has all of the information, the scripts, so that the principals and the coordinators and the investigation teams, they have everything right there at their fingertips to guide them through the process. Also is the M T S S toolkit, the pyramid that I, I, I reviewed earlier with the three-tier level supports that provides all of the different resources that we have to offer. Next slide, please. And as we mentioned earlier, uh, today, that October marks National Bullying Awareness Month. So this year, through the Division of Student Support Services, the teams work together to incre- to create themes for all of the schools, a monthly theme. Again, we're not focusing this work on October, in, in October only. This is an ongoing, again, I said earlier, it's a daily commitment to meet the needs of all of our children. And with the themes, every school has their own theme. Of course, October, we're sharing that theme district-wide, and as you can see, it's National Bullying Awareness Month. The theme will be red ribbon, emotional wellness, and depression awareness. And for the October Wellness Calendar, it's hyperlinked, is on our homepage, you will see that, because we also want to extend You will see that because we also want to extend it to our families so that while we're working with the children in the schools, they can also do these same activities at home, which is a really nice way to collaborate. And, and those themes include morning announcement scripts, restorative community building circle prompts, activities, and other resources. And then the Red Ribbon Planning Guide, that was also shared. Red Ribbon Week, which focuses on prevention awareness campaign. It is going to be from October 23rd through October 31st. And also, we are offering anti-bullying lessons. It's through Paster.org, and we also have social, emotional learning lessons. And so at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Chief Jazanowski.
Next slide, please, Admir. Good evening, board members, Dr. Williams Knight and listening audience. I'll be sharing the process of school-level reporting of a DASSA complaint. And individuals have three options on reporting a DASSA complaint. The first step, they have option one. They can complete the form on the district's website by clicking on Report Bullying at BPS, at the BPS homepage. They can locate their school's number and click on Report Bullying here, complete the electronic reporting form. Admir, can you please click on the first link? If that one doesn't work, Admir, you can also check the second one. If you scroll down to the bottom, Admir, and you can see the second bullet, Report Bullying at your school, if you click on that link. And you can see all the schools are listed. If you click on, if you can click on School Three, Report Bullying here. Families can go right to the site, and they can fill out the report, and there are thirteen questions that they would answer and then submit to the school. Thank you, Admir, if you can go back to the PowerPoint. And also, at the top, you can see bullying. Right at the top, where if a parent goes right to the school site, they can see bullying, and they can go right there to also do a report. And the PowerPoint, please, Admir. Thank you. Option two, they can download the report themselves from the district website or obtain one in the school's main office and submit to the DASSA coordinator. Option three, they can provide a verbal report to any adult who works at their school. That adult must make a report to the DASSA coordinator or co-coordinator. Step two, what happens once we receive a complaint? Once the electronic complaint is submitted, via the website or by a completed form, we start an investigation. If the building staff, if building staff and or administrators verbally informed of the incident, that staff member must fill out the electronic DASSA form to officially inform the DASSA coordinator of the incident. If building staff or an administrator receives completed DASSA form paper copy, that staff member must complete the electronic form so that it's officially put into our system. Next slide, please, Admir. Step three, a parent and guardian is notified. The building principal, who is the DASSA coordinator or an assistant principal, will notify the parent guardians of both parties involved, inform them of the incident. The investigation is then conducted. The DASSA coordinator or co-coordinator or investigation team begins the investigation and completes promptly. The investigation team may include the school's student support team, such as the school counselor, social worker psychologist, other school mental health professionals, and others to advise and respond. The DASSA coordinator or co-coordinator or investigation team completes and uses the following. They conduct interviews, collect evidence. If it's on emails, screenshots, documents, social media posts, the DASSA coordinator completes the DASSA final investigation report with a determination. Next slide, please, Admir. Investigation follow-up. The DASSA coordinator and or assistant principals document the incident and notify parents of the results. Step six, students create, there's an action plan created for the students involved. School's student support team, again, could be the school counselor, social worker psychologist, and or other school mental health professionals create a targeted school action plan for all students involved. The targeted students and the aggressors. And these are just some recommended actions. Restorative conferences between the parties. A request for assistance placed for all parties. Enroll students in tier two, tier three interventions, like Dr. Brown discussed. Provide additional supervision and monitoring of the parties involved. Continue communication with parents about the plan. Action plans must be monitored and adjusted if needed. Next slide, please, Admir. But our goal is always to build a bully-free culture within our schools. And what does that look like? Respond to signs of bullying by addressing reports immediately. Create morning messages that principals share. Discuss what it means to be an upstander. Faculty meetings, where we review and discuss positive adult and student interactions. A bullying reporting box. Diverse and inclusive posters focused on positive behaviors and interventions placed in high, visible areas throughout the school. Minimal dedication of one grade level a marking period to review, review bullying data and discuss interventions. And then also restorative circles. And what are those benefits? Positive interaction with students, BPS implementation, second step. Next slide, Admir. And what are some bullying prevention strategies? And I'll just name a few. Effective supervision of common areas. Class-wide SCL anti-bullying lessons, explicit teaching of skills, practice. Tier two supports, such as check-in, check-out, SAD groups, counseling, mentoring, restorative conversations. And then always, and then we call both as tier three supports, problem-solving circles and restorative conferences. Next slide, Admir. And what I'm really excited to share with all of you is we have now been identified as the Class Dojo District. And this is an opportunity for everybody to stay connected, families and the school, because it makes messages are made easily accessible to communicate with teachers, families, and staff anywhere, anytime, and are automatically translated into more than thirty-five languages. It offers a window into their world with stories. Teachers can securely share photos, videos, and updates on a private feed so parents can see the classroom magic for themselves, and then it helps them grow in their own way. Class Dojo helps teachers, families collaborate to support social, emotional learning with points and big ideas, and it gives kids a voice of their own with portfolios. Next slide, Admir. So we have an implementation team that consists of ASL Shadrick, ASL Murphy, ASL Perez, and Chief Ebony Bowa. We also have two OSA supervisors and one programmer on the team helping to ensure that our data is up to date with Class Dojo. And the beginning of your data for parent engagement is outstanding. School Thirty has been named this week's positive powerhouse. A few key points. In the last week, twelve thousand two hundred fifty-three parents were active on Class Dojo. In the past month, parents have received forty-five thousand three hundred twenty-three messages and have sent forty-two thousand four hundred eighty-one messages on Class Dojo, showing widespread engagement in both directions. The implementation team, we're working on a full district-wide launch. Next slide, please, Admir. And here you'll see the certificate that School Thirty was presented with as being a positive powerhouse. Next slide, please, Admir. And these are just some community stories that were shared. School Forty-three, some of their fourth graders, where he had the opportunity to plant some vegetables that were shared with families. We also have community stories for School Fifty, School Sixty-four, and School One-Fifty-Six. They have been shared with families using Class Dojo. Next slide, please, Admir. So what are our next steps and what are our summaries? Normalizing a stand-up, speak-up culture. Informing parents, caregivers of bullying signs to look for. Continue to monitor DASSA data. Continue to monitor the implementation of the code of conduct and offer supports. Ongoing training and support in the following areas. Restorative and trauma-informed care. Mental health first aid, suicide prevention. And school wellness teams will also focus on DASSA. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. I'm wondering if anyone would like to have any questions? Anyone who's still here? I see Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. Do you have anything?
Thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough, and I had no idea that all of this was going on with bullying in the district. And as I was listening to the presentation, I was so sad, you know, because we've lost children, you know, in this regard to bullying. And I always question, how did we overlook it, you know? Yeah, so I always think about that. How did we overlook it? I don't think you guys have the answer either, but I just shake my head every time, you know, we lose a child. But thank you for, you know, that information. And, and I'm glad to know that it's just not for October, you know, that we present bullying information. Do you start from K throughout the district, like K through twelfth grade? Or how do you do that? Because it seemed like the youngsters know about bullying too, pre-Kers.
Yes, yes, it does start from K up. It really, really starts with pre-K. You know, we really have those conversations with children about being respectful, being caring, being empathetic, being sympathetic. So we start as youngest, pre-K.
That's good to know. Thank you again.
Mr. Hurd, is there anything you'd like to ask?
Thank you, yes. Yes, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the great presentations. Looked like we're taking a lot of great strides to address bullying in our district. I know it seemed like we can never do enough because there's so many cases, and it's not, everybody knows, it doesn't really start in our schools. It's, most of it started in the city and come into our schools and to our buildings, and then lead up to our teachers, healthcare professionals, our counselors, psychiatrists have to deal with it. And I do have a couple of very important questions about it, though. When a parent calls and report bullying, or maybe even use, use the web platform, which I really like, I really like, because we talked about this for, for years. I really like that this is now developed, so, so congrats on that. If a parent call a principal and tell about a bullying issue with their child, and bullying has occurred in the classroom, how long does it take? Or what's the process of notifying the teachers in the classroom about the incident? Or that this is taking place, or there's a concern about it?
That should happen immediately because the investigation has to begin, so the teacher has to be notified.
Okay, and this, this practice is, has always been going on. Or I, I know it's some cases, I don't want to go into details about anything, but, but there's been cases where, like, teachers feel they haven't been notified about, about certain incidents, and then it kind of erupts sometimes early in the morning. Sometimes, you know, even before school starts. But I just wanted to know the process to make sure that all the teachers are notified. If a child is changing class, are they going to a gym class? Or they're going to the library, you know? How, how can we know, you know, that, that these teachers are being notified?
Usually, when a report comes in, it's usually specific. Many times, the parents will say, what's happening in the classroom? It's helping in phys ed, it's happening in music. And then not only will they talk to the whole room teachers, but they'll also talk to the encore teachers to make sure and get information from them to see if they're seeing or witnessing anything in the classroom.
Okay, and sometimes we get, teachers get notified about the students that maybe altercations won't take place. And that teacher will report that immediately to the principal, to other teachers? What's the process for that? I just want to be clear on.
If they know that something's going to happen, they really should notify administration, whether it's the assistant principals, the principal, especially if it's something that could rise to a higher level. The principal will want to intervene, or the APs will want to intervene in a situation.
Okay, now, we, we have students that, that do notify teachers. We know we got students that do notify adults inside the building that something's going to happen. But some of them want to do it discreetly. How are we affording our students the opportunity to do this discreetly without them being identified as a person trying to intervene?
We do have boxes in our, some of our schools have boxes where children can do it anonymously if they'd like. They can go to a school counselor, go to a trusted teacher. So many of our students have people that they trust that they can go to knowing this could be anonymous if they report something.
Okay, so like the box hanging on the wall, they don't want nobody to see them. They're changing glasses to put something in the box or notice something like that. Is there any of the avenues for, because I do have heard reports of students, you know, they, they're trying to tell teachers or they try to tell somebody that's an authority about what happened, or they can't get to them in time, or they can't, you know, you know, reach out to them or don't see them.
So bullying is really complicated. It really is complex. And, you know, the reality is, the reason that we do a lot of training to our staff is because when staff see it sometimes, it's uncomfortable. You know, because most everybody in their life has experienced being bullied at one point or another. And just because we grow older, we think that, you know, all of that is resolved, when maybe it's really not. And so teachers have to know and understand when children get to a point where they're coming to them and telling them that, you know, we've got a definition here of bullying. They may feel a conflict is being bullied because I'm scared of somebody, but it might not really be bullying, and it might be something that can, a restorative conference can handle. But if there's a pattern of it, if there is the imbalance of power, we have to make sure that our teachers, our assistant principals, our counselors, and everybody knows what to look for because you got cyberbullying that nobody can get a handle on, you know, because it, it happens twenty-four seven. You can't get away from it. So that's when we have to involve sometimes the authorities to get a handle on that. You've got bullying. It usually happens in those non-structured times on buses. It happens, you know, at a basketball game. It might happen in gym. It might happen in the bathroom. You know, it probably doesn't happen as much right in class during math because it's structured. But we have to train our folks to know what to look for. It's not always words. It could be gestures. You know, it could be in the lunchroom, you know? But my expectation is that, you know, every year, we just continue to get better and better. And that's what this DASSA reporting is all about. You know, when we hear it, everything stops for that administrator when they hear that bullying is happening because you never know, you know, how it's impacting somebody. It might not be of serious impact, or it might be really serious. So my expectation is when they get that call, because nine times out of ten before that, I mean, when somebody calls or reports it, they pretty much had it up to here, you know? And so my expectation is, you know, everything else has to be on hold while that investigation happens to at least verify, is this bullying? Or is this a conflict? And if it's a conflict, we handle it a little differently than we might with bullying, where there's paperwork that has to be, you know, paperwork that has to be completed.
Okay, thank you. And that's just one more question. I won't hold it too long. When a conflict does happen, and you said, I've been used to the word conflict or altercation. When that does happen outside of school grounds, and it gets, it doesn't get reported, but it gets heard through social media, through, through other kids talking, how we handle that conflict? Because we haven't seen it directly, but we know that it is just somewhere because other kids are talking about it.
So if it's impacting and interrupting a principal's day, if they got to go out now and investigate, did Terrence have an altercation at a skating rink? Or, you know, at a Little League game that could bleed into school? Because we can no longer just ignore, you know? Because we can no longer just ignore, you know, something that happens. Most of the things that happen in schools start in the community. And so our principals are real diligent about when they get word that something has happened in the community, kind of trying to figure out what's going on, and, you know, who's still in danger? Do I need to call another principal so that they know what's going on? Do I need to call Sharon Brown and see, you know, do we need to put somebody on home? I mean, it's, it's complicated. Every case is a little different. But when they get word of altercations, I would be here to say that all principals follow up.
Yeah, I would like to see, because the kids are recording these incidents, and they're going out to record them, and they're going on social media to meet up, to go out to see the fights, or fight and record them. If they can have a link, they can send those to us, so we can identify the people that's there, because the film is being taken anyway. But we would like to possibly try to find a way that we can, the kids can give us a direct, you know, feedback of what's going on. I know that they give it to each other, but we build these type of relationships with the children, we can help in other areas also. I'm going to rest here, I know it's, it's a, it's not an answer for that, but it's something to think about.
And, you know, I think that, um, Mr. Hurd, uh, in, at the high school level, especially if they have a trusted adult and someone they rely on, that, uh, a lot of information is given, a lot of the, um, the films are given, and you would really be pleasantly surprised at how many students really, uh, do, um, want to help in some situations. And so that's one of the, the good things about building these relationships with students, and that really, really helps. Ms. Woods, is there anything?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. The, you, you're talking about the DASSA reports. Do they go to New York State?
Yeah, so, uh, Sister Superintendent Samoski-Peters, she is required to report everything to the state. So she is the liaison for that. It does get reported.
So you're telling me that even if the principal goes and decides, oh, it's just a conflict between Mean Girls, that the state does actually get a DASSA report regardless to the result of the investigation?
Uh, I see, uh, Dr. Samoski-Peters, she's on the line, she can respond to that.
Hi. So the DASSA, uh, the report only goes to the state if the incident is founded. If the investigation is done and it's not, it's found unfounded, then it does not get reported.
And that's exactly what my parents have been telling me, that they file a complaint, we have Mean Girl situations, we have children who are in tears, and the investigations come back, oh, unfounded. And then they're, they call me because the, the kid can't tolerate it anymore. The superintendent is exactly right. When the child files those reports, they're fed up, they're emotionally disturbed, the parents are upset, and the coming back unfounded, so that we get these reports. I recall the last report we got on the DASSA reports, I had schools with serious problems that I knew about, and I was told there was zero, no DASSA reports, one or whatever. I was extremely disappointed, so I, I, I love the beautiful details in the theory, but I'm an auditor. I follow whether or not the implementation is, 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 uh, is thorough and effective. So, uh, no, it is not pretty. I think the superintendent is very clear that we have a lot of things going on, and it's hard to deal with. Uh, I had kids sex trafficked on, on the internet. Parents didn't know anything about it, they were safely in their rooms, but they were being sex trafficked. We all know we have suicide situations, so, you know, um... I'm just questioning, um, how effective that is. And my only other, my only other question is very serious. When there are children who have IEPs, emotional situations, and they're in our schools, and the teachers can't handle them, and they go from class to class to class, and then I get everybody from a teacher's aide to a kid to a parent telling me, can't we do anything to move the child out? And they, the child does not belong there, they're disrupting the, the whole school. What do you do about that? You, you, you have DASSA reports gazoo on some kids, and I'm not saying they're the majority of kids, but there are kids, children with significant problems, and I want to know what you do to remove them, because if you, I can give you details. So I'd like to know what you do.
So again, that's a complicated, you know, question that you're asking, because, you know, that's not really necessarily bullying the kid that has behavioral issues, you know, in one classroom, um, but, you know...
Every classroom they go to.
Say that again?
Every classroom they go to.
There certainly are children that, you know, have some serious traumatic, you know, things that they're dealing with in our district.
And if they beat up another kid, and the parents are calling me because they beat up the child, you're saying the DASSA report is unfounded because, well, that child has a problem. So what does that mean to the parent?
Board member Woods, this, this is Will, this is Will in the, in the boardroom. Uh, Board Member Woods, as Chairperson Shuda said at the beginning of the meeting...
I'm not giving specifics!
Well, ho- hold on, hold on, you, you are. So what I might suggest, rather than us trying to chase and solve the specific situations that you're referring to right now, just let me know what they are tomorrow. I'll be glad to have staff follow up and then give you an update on these individual cases. But trying to have the staff respond to these situations that you're bringing up right now in this board meeting is probably not the most effective way to do it.
Well, understand that, um, it's not one school, it's across the board, multiple schools, and it is a continuing bully situation. That's the only reason why I mention it. But I'll, I'll, we, um, drop it for now.
Well, I'm not asking you to, I'm not asking you to...
And let him know so that he can follow up. Not asking you to drop it, but if you have...
Right, yeah, thank you.
I mean, we've got 30,000 students, so even if you know of 10 in the scope of 30,000, you know, let them know, and it'll be followed up on.
President, uh, Batlin-Captain?
Thank you. Uh, it is my hope that if a board member is aware of a situation, that Madam Superintendent, you are immediately made aware of it, okay? And that you will, the board member will immediately address the situation, because it's very important that it's done. To paint a brush that, you know, it's not being, that, you know, is widespread, and is this, that, and the other, and the blah, 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 let's, let's just focus in on the, uh, on what we can fix. And the simplest way for a board member, if there's a problem, is to let the superintendent know about it. That's the simplest way. All that other stuff is just, is not going to get anything resolved. And so if that means, or Dr. Caressis, who will in turn let you know. So moving on, um, Dr., Darlene Jazanowski, thank you, and, uh, Dr. Brown for your presentation. One of the things I think we need to do, because I was looking at our, um, DASSA report, is that we only have listed in there the principal. I think we need to also put the assistant principal in that, uh, on, on, on our website, and make sure in our policy and our documentation that that is in there. I think we've come to the point with, um, the violence issue in our schools that are coming from outside of, with, you know, in our community. We not only have children, um, with this issue, but we have parents that are abusing our children on our websites, uh, as well as in our schools, attacking children or whatever. I think we're at the point that we need to, as a board, look at next steps with this process. And I feel that we need to have a report written, or, or for you, Dr. Williams, driven, once a month, that whenever a complaint is filed, that it automatically feeds to a report, so that anything that is happening inside the buildings, whether it's founded or unfounded, is being documented. And see, what happens with that is, it allows staff like, um, Laura, uh, Dr. Laura Samoski-Peters, to see pa, and, and, uh, and Dr. Ebony Bullock, to see patterns that are forming i- if we have problems in buildings. So say, for example, that, that, how that report would read is that, how I envision that report happening is, is that the person would type it up, uh, a report would be driven, uh, get, uh, generated, the principal would enter, this is unfounded. And then that would allow you, if there is a situation where you're starting to see a pattern, we've had five complaints in this school, all of them have been unfounded. That will take care of that need to address, um, uh, a tendency to might underplay the importance of it, if that should exist. I'm not saying that exists. But I think that we need to set up, start doing a little bit more, uh, in-depth monitoring of what next step should be. And it doesn't mean that you're going to do anything other than monitor a report, you're going to say, out of this school building this month, we had 10, one was substantiated, nine were not, okay? Uh, next month, you get a chance to, you know, form a report, how many this school X have this month? Okay, well, last month they had 10, this month they had 20. All 20 of them were unsubstantiated. Do you see what I'm saying? And so we start being a, um, we start monitoring it from a higher level, and that may indicate that you may need to provide additional resources, Dr. Williams, to the, um, schools, if you start seeing a pattern of that existing. But just to have the form completed, and not, uh, as a district, I think we're at the point where that form needs to be monitored, and, 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 of course, from the perspective as far as frequency and what type of situations are happening. So I have ideas on how that report would look, but it certainly would have categories so that it could be checked, and make sure that we are doing our due diligence to make sure that we are protecting, uh, children. Because something about that DASSA report that I noticed is, it is not one that's written for a, adults. There's not a part in there that talks about if an adult in the building feels that they're being bullied. So if a, if a parent was to try to fill that report out, so for an incident that happened with them, okay, it doesn't really meet that need. So let's take a look at that, and let's try to make sure that we, 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 we move it to the next level. This happened under, uh, Dr. Rosser. He was the one who, uh, initially started that, and that idea was given to him then, but we didn't have the frequency that we have now. I am being told that parents are attacking kids, okay, on school property. So, uh, that means that a parent may decide to beat their child or whatever. I feel we're obligated, so we need to look at that form and make sure that the principal has to fill that, uh, uh, form out, uh, that may trigger, uh, uh, child protection services being involved, that we cover ourselves in that way, and make sure we're doing it in a, in a thorough way. And I think we'll, I think we'll cover everyone's concerns if we know that that form, that somebody is monitoring that form at least once a month, or something like that. What do you think about that, ladies? What do you think? What, what do you think, Sharon, Dr. Brown, Darlene, and Laura? What do you guys think?
No, that's... The report, right now, the current report that the principals complete after their investigation, does everything you just said. So it allows us to say, uh, the principal can tell us if it was an adult who was either the bullier, or the person being bullied. We collect all of the information about the, um, incident, and it tells us if, whether it's founded or not, the principals are required to complete that report. And there's a question that says, is it founded or unfounded?
Okay, so you have that, then?
I have that.
Because I got the understanding that the only time it moved to the next, or you were aware of it in this conversation earlier, was if it was founded.
Yeah, I don't think that was very clear. Only, it only goes to the state if it's founded, but it, but all of them come to me. And I share that data with the ASLs and with Dr. Bullock, and, but the form that they're required to fill out is any, anybody complains, anybody makes a DASSA complaint, a parent, a teacher, a community member, anybody can make the complaint. The principal investigates, they, it's a lengthy form, they fill it out, and it comes to me electronically. And the nice thing is, is all the data gets filtered into a spreadsheet, so it's very easy to look for patterns using this.
So, so you're able right now, based on the paperwork that you're getting back from the schools, to tell us what, what type of bullying is our biggest issue?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And so that's important, because, um, I, does it also reflect whether it was cyberbullying?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that, that's a report that certainly, um, I'm curious, that I would be interested in seeing, uh, at a, a future committee report. Because the problems that we're having in Buffalo Public Schools is not unique to Buffalo Public Schools. The uniqueness of it is, is that we have a tendency to air our concerns where other people don't. That's the only unique part of that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I just have one, uh, quick, uh, question before we close for the evening. Is there some way, um, that we monitor the fidelity of the process, of the DASSA process throughout the district? Is there some way that we're monitoring to make sure that schools are doing what's expected?
So, yes, there, there is. So, um, when, it's not 100%, but if an electronic complaint is filed, I also get notified about that. I don't see the details, but I know a complaint came in, and I know which school it was from. So then I regularly check to make sure I see a form come in from that school within, like, a week or so, to make sure they did their investigation. If I don't see that, I regularly communicate with the ASLs, with Darlene and her team, and say, hey, I, you know, I saw something come in from this school, but I never got a report on it. And then they follow up with the principal.
Okay, okay. Just curious. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Dr. Williams?
I think we're out. A discussion, and...
Danny, go ahead, to the discussion, or if you're ready to close it up, it's really...
Oh, I thought you were ready to close it up. I'm sorry, if you're still discussing...
No, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to close it up.
Okay.
I want to thank, thank everyone.
Great, Terry, can I say one other thing?
You can say whatever you'd like.
Thank you, as a board. Can we this month do a bullying, um, poster contest?
Actually, you know what? I believe, remember, I showed the...
Right.
I think it, I believe, I have to verify, I believe there is a, a poster contest, and I have to look at the details.
So, yeah, look at the poster contest, and maybe we can highlight them, or, uh, bring, uh, put them up or something, um, at our, uh, uh, November meeting, or maybe give a, a little gift or something to the schools that, you know, have the most posters or something. Let's, let's, uh, let's, let's create a culture, have them put it all over their buildings and everything, and let's be excited about it.
Yes, I'll follow up to you.
Thanks. Mr. Hurd, hand is up.
Mr. Hurd, yeah?
Just one question, just one question. Uh, we have a lot of community partners, like Pastor Giles groups, uh, that come and help us out, uh, you know, help try to trend, you know, violence or bullying that goes on in the district. Has everyone been trained to recognize it and how to report, always from our, our, um, our, our district partners and, and, and workers, like, even like cafeteria workers? Have everyone been trained in this facet to work with DASSA, or to, uh, identify and to report out to what they, what they're seeing?
That's a very good question. I know at the school level, because they have partners located right within the schools, so with our PowerPoint presentation that we share with the principals, and they have their opening day meeting and their faculty meetings, they can share that. I know with our partners and, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Reynolds, I know with the RFPQ, there's training that takes place with our partners. We can certainly deepen our work around DASSA for our community partners. I do, I do know we meet with them, we share the Code of Conduct, the expectations, which that is included in the bullying, in, in, in our Code of Conduct.
My recommendation would be in the interim, that partners all know if they see or hear some... My recommendation would be in the interim, that partners all know if they see or hear something, to let their building principals know, that there's something that they've heard, if they haven't been trained specifically, like I know we partner with U B, and you know, we usually have a table where we send folks out to U B, and they make sure that we know, you know, all of the evidence-based, you know, ways to interrupt bullying, to address bullying, but for our partners, you know, we've got hundreds of them. But you know, what I would say is, is very, it's much easier for us to, as a beginning, say, if a partner, I don't care if you're just glazing windows in the building, if you see or hear something that doesn't sound quite right, to let the principal know, and the principal has absolutely been trained, and if it's not the principal or the assistant principal, who is the designee? They've all been trained.
It's superintendent, but I was, I was thinking, because like, uh, I, I know we mentioned a lot about, about, about big businesses, and um, Fortune 500 companies, and we walk us to some of their buildings, like we do over at General Motors, uh, if you go on inside the plant, there's a, a small, short training video that you'll watch, that you have to see before you can come into the building. And um, that's something that maybe you can address, that to focus on anti-bullying, or, or what you see, or who to report to, who the principal is in, in that location, or the vice principal, sisters, assistant principals. Um, I think maybe something like that, so everybody have a, a quick something they have to watch, or get an understanding about what our, what we require in our building, so what the steps would be.
It's a good point, it's a good point.
Okay, I'd like to thank uh, Dr. Brown.
Idea about the posters, that, that's a great idea for every building.
Great, I'd like to thank Chief Jazanowski, uh, Dr. Brown, Dr. Samoski, and Dr. Williams Knight, it's up to you to close this uh, long evening.
All right, I just want to say everyone get some rest, it was a long evening, it was productive. So get some rest, and we'll get back in the ring tomorrow, I'm happy to report that the family has had an opportunity to meet with their young man. Um, you know, he's got a long road ahead of him, you know, he's got a huge Buffalo Public School family, and that's what I wanted the family to know, that, you know, they're not alone in this, and so.
Was he a high school student or middle?
High school.
High school.
Dr. Williams Knight, if you know of anything that we can assist them with?
Okay.
You know, hurt, like, please reach out.
Okay, I will let you know, I'm sure down the road there will be, you know.
Meals or something, you know?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for always being there for their students, you've got the hours you put in.
Thank you so much, all right, good night, everyone, we'll see you.
God bless.
Thank you.
God bless them.
Say a prayer for that young man.
Yes.